Of the overlay districts on each end of town. So I don't know if you want to speak anything more about this, Jim?
Sure. So in last week's packet, I included a couple of maps. And they're kind of busy because they're generated on the computer and sometimes the parcel ID indicators kind of overlapped. So what I did, I went out and I just took each of the assessors' maps and kind of highlighted the areas for each of those areas, which match up with what's in the table in the article that you're reviewing. So for example, if you took in this packet map 20, you could go down the list and identify each individual parcels that are part of map 20, that are part of the overlay district. And then just kind of work your way through.
So John, do you have any questions since you were the one that requested?
Well, I haven't even had a chance to review it yet.
Okay, all right.
So I'm not even sure what I'm looking at. Map 20.
So if you... So when... If you take the packet I handed out tonight, so with your packets, I submitted a different map. And when I looked at it, I thought it might be confusing, so I created these other maps on the actual town assessor map.
Okay.
So if you look at, on the bottom right, it says map 20. If you pull that out, I have it highlighted in yellow, the parcels that are within that particular overlay district.
Mm-hmm.
And then you can match that up with, in the table, in the bylaw. So if you look at map 20, it lists all the individual parcels that are covered within that section, within that overlay district.
So this is more of a Zoom. I think the last one, we saw at the last meeting was just one sheet and it included all the area.
What do I gave you over the, you know, last Wednesday?
Oh, okay, yeah.
So that was in that packet.
Okay.
So...
Hey, Conny, do you have the... Do you have the table from last week? I wasn't able to stop and get it, and get everything today.
Are you looking for the...
Appreciate it. Thank you. Like, that's the table?
Yeah, there's a table. It's part of the bylaw.
Okay, so this whole thing came about because we were going to allow uses in both ends of town that weren't allowed before. We were going to make them similar.
Right. So initially, in the initial adoption of the bylaw, established the non-medical marijuana overlay district retail, which is essentially down on kind of Route 58 in South Carver. And then there's the non-medical marijuana overlay district cultivation processing, which was located north of Route 44 on, you know, parcels up in the North Carver area. And then during the course of the last two years, as interest generated in town for citing a facility, there are people who were interested in properties in the South District for the cultivation processing. And then kind of vice versa, people who are interested in retail up in North Carver. And then possibly combine that with a retail and processing facility. So the purpose was to, you know, allow that choice to be made. You could locate up north with your cultivation processing and potentially apply for a retail license in addition to the other licenses you need. And then, but they weren't changed. So right now, the town has a cap of two retail licenses, and it will remain at two licenses. One of those licenses is already gone because, well, not necessarily gone yet, but they've already been approved for a facility. And so now they're going to the Cannabis Control Commission to get their cannabis license for retail use. There are some other entities kind of poking around, but they haven't submitted a host community agreement yet. And so once they do that, then that puts them kind of into the serious category that moving forward the application.
So along with this change in the bylaw, there were some other things, and this particular thing. Why we're looking at the zones for this is because there was some ghost?
Right. So the assessor had gone through more recently to kind of look through the parcels. And he found that there were a number of parcels that don't exist. And so his concern was, he didn't want to see something in the table that maybe in the future, you know, they only show here on this table. And then in the future, they may assign the particular parcel number to a different property that may not be part of the overlay district. So the goal was to eliminate those ghost parcels. And what I can do, I can just read those to you. So they're map 25, lot 4, map 25, lot 4A, map 25, lot 4B, map 25, lot 4C, and map 25, lot 5. And then in the other overlay district, it's map 95, lot 6A.
So we weren't here tonight to change any of these zoning or the overlay district. We were just, we were just here to talk about the ghost parcels.
Right. So remove the ghost parcels, leave the rest of the overlay districts as they are, and then just allow either type of use, the cultivation processing or the retail use in either overlay district.
So a quick question on map 95. You have, looks like lot 2. You have no written in there, circled in green?
Okay. So when I was going through this, so lot 2 was not identified in the tables as a property for the retail district. And so going through the process, it's not listed in the table, so it's not part of the overlay district. So I marked it in blue just to signify to everyone that that's not part of the overlay district.
Do you know the history about that? I mean, what?
Um, I don't, yeah.
It just makes no sense. It's like...
Right. It would seem it should be part of...
It's like an island in the middle of...
Right. It seems like it should be part of the district, but I don't know the history of the parcel.
Well, I think I can fill you in on that. I think at the time we created the overlay districts, there was a... The owners of that particular property, they came and they, I believe, they requested, or they either lived in the neighborhood or owned that property, but they requested that they not, that be not included. So we took that out.
Okay.
Well, there was a concern there of, about the traffic flow. I remember the couple coming and they said that there were a lot of accidents in the curve of the road on Tremont Street in front of their property, so...
It was about a half a mile up from where the cannabis, the supposed cannabis shop is going to go in, on the left. Remember that? So, yeah, they had a concern for the traffic and a concern for the curve, the road there.
The curve, oh, yeah. Understood.
And it only seemed to be the right thing to do, you know, at the time. Because that way there, we could remove that and still be able to allow for plenty of other space in that particular area. And then that one dangerous spot wouldn't have to be a concern.
Any other questions by any of the board members? This is open to the public, too. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions about the, this is the non-medical marijuana overlay district changes? Are we going to have another meeting, Jim, on this? Or do we have to wrap up tonight, the zoning articles?
Yeah, we have to wrap everything up tonight. They're trying to get the final warrant put together.
Okay.
Um... Okay, never mind, never mind.
Uh... Do you want a little more time to look at this, to look at that? John, or, I mean, I was wondering if we go to solar canopies and if you wanted to, or if you had anything more. I mean, we could...
Yeah, quick, quick question. So we're, we gave a no on map 98, right there at that curve, because of the concern about the traffic at the curve. But then on map 128, right across the street, we said it was okay over there.
Well, that was just a request of the person that owned the property, I believe. I mean, what we did is, is we actually really foreshortened the area there in South Carver and made it almost impossible to do anything there because you couldn't meet the 500-foot setbacks and from the church. And the only way to do anything there was to buy the church. And somebody bought the church, so... So we didn't want to make it any smaller than what it was, but we tried to address any concerns that the citizens had out there. So do I hear a motion to recommend this article to town meeting?
I'll make a motion to recommend the article to see if the town will vote to amend cover zoning bylaws, section 5000, non-medical marijuana.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Kevin Robinson, second by Ellen Sodillo. Okay. I guess since we're on Zoom, we're going to have to do a roll call. Mr. Shea. Oh, yeah, we get a, is there anybody in the audience like to speak? I guess, oh, I'm sorry, I kind of took this out of order. I think we got to close. No, 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 we're still in the public hearing because we have more to go. All right, so...
Cornelius Shea votes aye.
And Jock Gasky says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
All right, so that's unanimous. All right, so that takes care of the marijuana. Let's go to the solar canopies. So on the solar canopies, so this is an article to see if the town will vote to amend section 3580 of the Carver zoning bylaw titled... Oops, that's the wrong one. Solar canopies. I'm sorry. Solar canopies, to see if the town will vote to amend the Carver zoning bylaw by adding a new section 3590 titled solar canopies as set forth below or to take any other relative action there, too. And... Yeah, you can go ahead if you'd like to.
So the informational summary on this is, the 2019 annual town meeting approved Article 17, lease of air rights over town-owned land for solar canopies. The vote approved the transfer of the care and custody of municipal parking lots of specified town-owned properties to the select board for the lease of air rights easements, et cetera, to private solar developers that would allow for the development of solar canopies over municipal parking lots. This proposed amendment would amend the zoning bylaw to allow the solar canopies as a second principal use so that any electrical power generator may be sold to the electrical grid if the power generator cannot be used locally due to existing power agreements.
All right, Jim, would you like to, all I remember is at town meeting, we did discuss this. I guess we had, there was discussion about solar canopies at the police station, possibly solar canopies at the new elementary school.
Right. On the handout I gave you, there's a, it's from the town meeting minutes from 2019. And it lists 51 Pond Street, the DPW school bus repair garage, 85 Main Street Elementary School, 99 to 103 Main Street Fire Headquarters, 1 Green Street Fire Station Number 2, 120 South Main Street Fire Station Number 3, 2 Meadow Brookway Library, 60 South Meadow Road Middle High School, and 108-112 Main Street Town Hall Police Department EMS. So those were the properties that were, through town meeting vote, transferred over to the care and custody of the select board, more to do the leasing of the parking lots. Subsequent to that, I've been working with a consultant who is looking into the feasibility of doing the leasing. And so they're, you know, probably in the, in the next month, they'll have kind of proposed bid packages to be ready to be reviewed by the town, you know, through the select board. And then at that point, the select board will have the opportunity to determine, or the school committee for the school properties would have the opportunity to review these proposed things before they go out to bid, determine which, you know, which aspects of the bid, what would you call them, bid packages should go out to bid. And then the other option is that, you know, before they make a decision, they could also go ahead and put the bid packages out, but they have the right to refuse what, you know, what a proposal comes back, you know, at. So that's kind of the process. So what the solar canopy article will do is it allows the town on, to have the solar canopies as a second principal use so that the power can be sold to the grid. If it's not a, if it's an accessory use, you can only use the power in the, you know, the principal use building. The problem with that, though, is that the town already has existing net metering agreements. So for example, up on Route 44, there's, it looks like one solar array, but it's actually two different projects. So the town has an agreement to buy the power from that. And then I believe it's also up the street here on the left, I believe it's Pettix. That is also another net metering agreement. And so this just kind of positions the town for, to be able to sell the, you know, lease the properties and then the power can be sold to the grid versus try to use it in a town hall because we already have net metering agreements in place. So that wouldn't conflict with an existing contract.
So it still benefits the town no matter what?
Right. So the town would get lease payments from a potential solar developer. And then there's still control at either the school committee or the board of selectmen to determine, you know, what the design looks like. You know, they'd be part of that process to determine what it looks like. And then once the town gets to the point where it accepts a proposal, you know, they accept the bid for a particular property, then it will go through a site plan review and special permit through the planning board. As kind of a final measure. So there'll be plenty of steps where people in the community will have a chance to review what's being proposed, weigh in on it, and then, you know, a decision will be made.
I always thought, as I was talking to Jim a couple of months ago, that what was, these solar panels would provide, if they were at the police station, they would provide the police station with power. If they were at the school, they'd provide the school with power. But then, as we found out, these buildings may have already been in some sort of agreement. So no matter what, the town still benefits.
Right.
Whether you sell the power or whether the power goes to the particular building that's, that these panels are located on.
So DPW and the school department at the bus yard, they're really interested in having this because during winter months when it snows, and then even during the sump, so when it's, during the winter months, it protects the buses from snow accumulating, and then it's less staff time out clearing the bus roofs. And then during summer months, you know, if the buses are used for summer programs, it keeps the, you know, it helps keep the vehicles cooler, you know, so it's not in the direct sunlight. So there's additional benefits to that, so...
This is Jeff. I mean, Jim, do you know that there would be power right at the canopies? Because I know, for instance, that a lot of the buses, they use electrical to, they use electric to keep the batteries generated and to keep them warm. So I would imagine they would build these canopies in a way that they could plug directly in right at those sources.
Right. So that could be part of the bid creation so that, so in that particular instance where you had buses that needed to be plugged in, that could be a specification so that when it does go out to bid, that could be, you know, addressed with the bid itself to help power the buses.
That's good.
Or power the, you know, charge up the batteries or, you know, other kind of features.
All right, thank you. Any other questions by board members?
Under 3590.30, in the first sentence, I think we should remove the word sale. Must undergo a procurement process for lease, sale of land and/or air rights. Because I believe we've only agreed to lease.
Okay, that's right. So in the Article 17, it talks about leasing portion of the property, so that's correct. So we can strike out sale.
And do we need to identify in the first, under locations where it says, by the planning board as a special permit granting authority. Proposed locations must be approved at town meeting. Do we need to clarify the required vote in that, two-thirds or a majority? I know it was two-thirds when we passed the, passed it at town meeting, so I'm not sure.
Um... So the, you know, the vote has already been taken.
Well, right, along the lines of future use?
I think in future, you know, it could be in the future, the, you know, the method of voting might change. You know, for example, some, the state passed a, didn't really pass a law, but it was a change to the statute that certain types of zoning or approval, like for housing, affordable housing, only required majority vote. But I think in this case, I don't think the two-thirds is necessary. It would be by whatever the rules of the town meeting to approve them.
Right.
If those rules changed, then we're not hamstrung by the inconsistency with the bylaw.
Because we were very specific in what we approved for originally at the last town meeting. That's why I'm wondering, because this is, they must be approved at town meeting, or should it be must have been approved?
Or maybe just change it shall be approved at town meeting. Does that work for you?
Will that work?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Any other comments?
Are we changing that, too? Instead of must, we're going to propose locations shall be approved? Striking must and just, just going to say shall?
Right.
Okay.
And then the next paragraph down where it talks about procedure, just striking out sale. So for lease, probably in, okay.
Anything else by the board members? Anybody in the audience have anything to add? Okay, seeing none. No response, okay. Have a motion to recommend this solar canopy bylaw with the changes we just made to town meeting?
Cornelius Shea will make a motion to approve the proposed solar canopy bylaws to town meeting with the amendments. with the amendments as discussed.
I'll second that.
So it'll be a motion by Cornelia Shea, second by Kevin Robinson for the discussion. Okay, so let's take a roll call vote, please.
Cornelia Shea says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
All right, so that was unanimous. So let's move on to the single-family cluster development. And this is an article to see if the town will amend the Carver zoning bylaw by adding a new section, four thousand, titled "Single Family Cluster Development" as set forth below, or to take any other action relative thereto. So.
Would you like me to read the summary?
Just, yeah, yeah, please. You can read the informational summary. I just want to say that I, I don't want to make this the, the, the main concern of the bylaw, but the reason that this bylaw came up was because of what you're gonna read on the informational summary. But, I mean, I believe this bylaw is a good bylaw for the town. So go ahead, Kevin, thank you.
So it's not, that's the thing, it's not gonna be just for this, it's gonna be for the town and that's why we're doing it.
Well, if you can read it and I'll explain it.
Okay.
Please.
Informational summary. In December two thousand eighteen, the planning board approved the Weathervein and Patriot Pines project, a fifty-four unit over fifty-five townhouse development located on South Meadow Road across from Plymouth Airport. The project was approved as a single-family townhouse development. The townhouse definition currently only allows townhouses that are more than two dwelling units and no more than five dwelling units per building. And no more than twenty-five percent of units can be duplexes or two-family dwellings. Therefore, the approved project is a non-conforming development. The planning board is requesting approval of the proposed single-family cluster development bylaw so that the board may approve the Patriot Pines development as a single-family development. The planning board also believes that the single-family cluster development will also provide the town with another housing option to increase the diversity of housing types while preserving open space in the town.
Thank you, Kevin. So, um, let me just go through this new bylaw. And this, this is a single-family cluster development bylaw and is written from the townhouse development bylaw. So it copies all the, it copies the townhouse development bylaw. The offsets are the same to the buildings. The, the way that we figure the units is, 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 comes from the townhouse development bylaw. It allows for the same density of units as in the townhouse development. So if you go through the formula of the NULA, which is taking away the wetlands and, and areas that can't be built on, if you go through that, and if a piece of property can have six townhouses on it or six units of townhouse, this also allows for just six single-family dwellings. So this doesn't increase the amount, that, that was my concern, that it doesn't increase the amount of units that you can put on the development. Cluster development on a lot, it clusters development on a lot allowing open space between existing neighbors. And so what we find is, is that you can, it, it's, it's, it's like, it's a cross between, as I spoke to, to a former planning board member, he said, "This is a cross between townhouse development, which we see on Santana Lane and Copper Lantern Lane, and the conservation subdivision, which we see in Redtail Lane here in Carver." So what it does is it clusters the, the development so it doesn't go through the, the whole piece of property. It's, it's in a smaller portion of property. And it, so cluster, the cluster development on a lot allowing open space between existing neighbors. So sometimes you can cluster, cluster these developments towards the center of the lot and so that existing neighborhoods around the property are protected. There's, there's more of a buffer. So it allows people to own a home without having to take care of the property as this would be taken care of by the homeowners association. And these projects are, this type of development is ideal for over fifty-five projects and for people who want to downsize or for people with no children. And I don't know how many times I've talked to people in town and they'd say, "Gee, I'd love to downsize. I'd like to get out of my house. I'm an older person. My husband, you know, can't maintain the house anymore. You know, I would like to go to a place that's similar to what we own, but maybe like one floor or four and, or one and a half stories. And, and I don't want to mow the lawns and take care of the ad." So to me, this is something that, that my wife and I have discussed and, and we like this type of development to go to someday ourselves when I get really old. But, so on over five, over fifty-five projects, this type of housing does not affect the schools and protects the aquifer by using less water. So less sewage goes into the ground. And I guess there's studies done that show that people over fifty-five use less water because you don't have children, you're not doing the washes and, as many washes and with the, the typical family household, if it's just you and your wife. So you, you, it's, 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 it's better, it's better for the aquifer. It gives the over fifty-five a choice from living in the parks, which we have several in town, or going to multi-level townhouses that are difficult to live in for older people. And as we, as I've gone to master plan meetings in, in the past, you know, a lot of people talk about that, you know, this type of, of living. They, they'd like to do this, they'd like to retire in town, they, they'd like to downsize. And, and there's a lot of people that still want to stay in Carver if, if there was a place that, that they could go to that was reasonably priced. And can allow for more, this type of development can allow for more affordability-priced housing because of the clustering of the units, which leads to smaller road lengths and less construction cost. And of course, you don't have to buy a lot. You know, a lot's gonna cost you two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars in town right now, from, from what I've seen. New single-family homes in Carver range from, from the new subdivisions that, that we've approved lately and, and we're seeing new homes built on them. The new homes go for six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars. So it's, it's not something that everybody can afford. And the, one new, uh, let's see, one new development that we have in town, this is on Santana Way with Townhouse Development. And the units there, I've seen them advertised at four twenty-five. So you, you can see it's a, there's quite a big price range from buying a, a lot of land and building a house on it as compared to doing some sort of cluster development. It's a, this type of development allows for a village-style development, which is better suited for some areas of town. I don't think, you know, as I drive to Plymouth and I see all the townhouses in a row in Plymouth, really wouldn't want to see that in Carver. I mean, we do have a townhouse bylaw, but the townhouses, the two developments that, that we have are tucked away into the woods so you don't really see them. Although they're, they're, they're nice-looking townhouses, but from the road, you don't see them. And, but this type of development, even if you see it from the street, it would kind of match the neighborhoods that, that, that they're in. So it allows for a village-style development, better suited for some areas of town. And, and we've talked about that at Master Plan Two. And it allows for more affordable units in town because, you know, ten percent of the units, if you have this type of development, like other subdivisions and everything, but these allow for like more units. So ten percent of these units would be affordable housing. So that's what I have to say about the cluster development. I think it's a, a good idea. I think that there are older people in town that are looking, that would appreciate this. Also, there are, it's, it's a big thing all over the state now. Most everything that's being built is over fifty-five. A lot of it is over fifty-five. And I think this would be, it, it would look good in town. Now, we started off talking about Patriot Pines. And this is a, and this is just to be transparent because I just didn't want this to be brought up saying that we were doing this for, specifically for a developer. But there's a property in South Meadow Road between Wade Street and Village Links Golf Course. And it first came to the planning board as a nineteen lot and it was a full-scale subdivision in, in twenty eighteen. And when that was presented, there was some pushback by the neighbors because it was, it was full-size lots, acre and a half, and we had drainage easements, drainage basins that were, came up against, that were right near people's realot lines. People didn't want to see that, the neighbors didn't want to see that, they didn't want to see trees cut down. They didn't, they didn't particularly care for the, the idea of having these drainage basins in the back of their property. So later on, as time went on, this project in two thousand and nineteen came back to us as a cluster townhouse development. And in, I believe it was fifty-six units. And it was for over fifty-five and, and older. And of, of these units, six units were to be affordable. So first plans of the cluster showed, as far as I can remember, the, the sum of them and the ones we have on file, we had, there were some duplex units and there were some single units. And so it was, was approved by the planning board to be built in, built in three stages. And it came to the planning board and to the new planning director. As time went on, we went through different planning directors, we went through different building inspectors, we went through planning board changes. But I was still here. So it came to the planning board, to new planning director Jim Walsh for a minor modification. And it was picked up by Jim Walsh that the single-unit construction does not fall in the townhouse development bylaw. So by the time this all happened, two single-family units had been built and two additional foundations had been placed on the property. And all work has been stopped by the builder at this time. So, yes, this would, would help the builder continue. There were a lot of things in that, in that subdivision that the planning board liked. That we, we liked that it was over fifty-five. We liked that it didn't use the schools. We liked that, that we, the, there was less water use and, and probably sewage going into the ground because it wasn't for all families. And the neighbors liked it because of the way it was going to be built. It pulled all the, the building away from the neighborhood property lines. And so there was a large buffer between property lines and, and what was to be built. So there were a lot of good things that I liked about this project, including it gave the town six more units of affordable housing, which a lot of people in town feel it's, it's difficult sometimes for them to stay in town because they want to sell their house and, and, and they can't afford a full-scale house here. And I've also heard a lot of people talk about, "Well, our children can't afford anything in town either. We'd like to have our kids, and they'd like to be in Carver, but they just can't afford anything here." So with the affordable units and just because of the clustering, cluster housing in, in, in other situations, even if it wasn't over fifty-five, it would make housing that was, would be more affordable to everybody in town. So having said that, uh, anybody from any of the planning board members here that'd like to ask any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Ellen.
Is it strictly over fifty-five or are they allowing people to buy them that aren't of that age?
Well, the particular Patriot Pines was over fifty-five. But this could be used for over fifty-five housing or it could be used for, for just regular family housing, the bylaw could be. But it fits ideally with over fifty-five. Any other questions by the board?
I don't have a question, but this was brought before the zoning bylaw study committee and the vote from that committee, which I, I, I might be mistaken, was unanimous. And to hold off on this, they felt it needed further vetting that couldn't be done before town meeting. And it couldn't properly be gone over. So the recommendation of the zoning bylaw study committee was to pass on this and give the, give us a chance to be fully vetted. I, I find it difficult that it could be fully vetted tonight. But there's a couple of other things, too. One of the problems is it's specifically, one of the major proponents of this is, is the developer that this is going to affect the most. And, and I have issues with that, ethical issues with that. This is not being put forward by the town because it's in the best interest of the town. Otherwise, it would be an over fifty-five development plan and not a single-family cluster development plan, which allows up to triple, triple the density. Three houses built to an acre. On an average, seven-acre property, NULA property or seven-acre property clear, you could build five houses, but under this, it's fourteen. I don't feel it benefits the town in any way. And if it did, it would be limited to fifty-five and older. It provides wash and the services and it triples the density. But, but more importantly, it, it has come to my attention that private meetings between current and former planning board members and town employees have taken place in regards to this particular meeting. I won't mention any other names other than the fact that I was involved in one of these meetings. And I know it goes further than that, which raises more issues of what's going on. And unless everything is properly brought out into the open in regards to this bylaw, I don't feel that it is in the best interest of the town that we pass this bylaw. Morally, ethically, it's our responsibility to do the best for this town. And that's, that's how I stand on this project. This wasn't properly vetted, it's been, it doesn't benefit the town in any way, shape, or form that any of other bylaws, like the conservation subdivision or various other bylaws out there, couldn't have handled. The zoning bylaw committee says to hold off on it, it needs further vetting and it couldn't be properly gone through by the time it went through town meeting. But instead, we go around that and we come up with a single-family cluster development. And frankly, I don't feel it's in the best interest of this town. I don't feel it's in the best interest of the people or the residents for us to approve this. Personally, I feel this should be pulled from the warrant and it shouldn't have even been brought in.
All right, anybody else? I don't know, John?
The, uh, kind of along the lines of what Connie was saying, saying over there. We spent last week a good deal. We spent last week a good deal debating the definition of a townhouse, and then to essentially redefine that townhouse in a separate article puts a, kind of a conflict of definitions into the bylaws. But secondly, to, I don't think that needing an additional bylaw is, this seems that it would be, it would, what we're talking about is creating a new subdivision, essentially. And simply adjusting other bylaws that allow for more homes on a smaller plot seems a little bit easier than creating a whole new bylaw. I, I agree that this, this needs to be vetted a little bit more. We need a little bit more, there needs to be a little bit more discussion as far as, you know, this whole, this whole thing. From my point of view, and from where I'm sitting, this is my first exposure to, to what's happening with this, so that, that's my feeling on it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, I feel that, you know, our discussion is about townhouses, you know, going to single units. I mean, they think, you get to save benefit out of the townhouse. You can benefit easily. You care about everything, but it's not one part of the whole.
Well, like I s- said at the beginning, this doesn't increase the density. I mean, what you can have with townhouses, it, it'd, it'd be the same density as, as with the single-family homes. So, uh, but is there anything that you want to say, Jim, or before I give it out to the audience?
I think we just have Paul Buck speak.
Okay. Uh, okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment, and if you could, if you could use that microphone there?
Hi, my name's Jim Bristol. For folks that don't know me, we're the proponent of the development, we're the vein at Patriot Pines. We built a similar community up in South Weymouth. Single-family detached fifty-five and over housing. A hundred and fifty units on a hundred and seventy acres. The housing is on thirty acres. The hundred and forty remaining acres is open space. It is the biggest taxpayer in the town of Weymouth. When we came to Carver, we were excited about the opportunity to build something similar to this. We came in front of the board. The board voted unanimously to approve it as single-family homes. We've invested millions of dollars already, building the roads and the infrastructure to build single-family homes. I believe when I saw this single-family open space bylaw drafted, I immediately said, your concern, this needs to be age-restricted. What we're hoping to do is only build fifty-five and over housing. And if you pass this bylaw with that, just change the bylaw to a single-family age-qualified open space development. It's not just our development. You know, we came to Carver with the hopes of, my family has been in business for a hundred years. My kids are fifth generation. We've built communities all over the South Shore, and we were excited about what Carver was willing to work with us when we first got involved in this project. Lauren and Sarah worked on the project for several years to get it to the point it was at. But allowing for the single-family, as, as Bruce said, almost everybody that moves into our community is coming from a single-family home. It's very rare that someone moving into a fifty-five and over is coming from something other than a single-family home. So this allows that demographic to move into a home that is standalone, is maintained by the HOA. We build the homes virtually maintenance-free. If you go up and drive through our community, it's twenty years old, and you'll be, it'd be hard to determine which was the first house built and which was the last house built. They stand the test of time, biggest taxpayer in the town. I, you know, it, there's a selfish aspect to it, but I think as the entire town of Carver looks at it, this could be the best bylaw you ever pass, whether it's us or anybody else proposing the development. There's a huge demand. The fifty-five and over demographic is growing exponentially. People say, well, what happens when the baby boomers, that age group moves on? When the baby boomers hit seventy, the millennials hit fifty-five. So they'll, I don't see that there's ever a gap in the demand for this type of housing. And I think, you know, you, if, if we have to, we'll come back and build duplexes or something different. But your overall tax base will be better served with the single family. We've got a second site on Silver Street, so we were gonna have price points that went from the affordable units in the two hundreds up to five, six hundred thousand for single family. And both sites were, we were planning to do single family, so I hope you folks will consider just amending it, making it age-qualified, and I believe it'll be the best thing you ever do for the town. Thank you.
Quick question for you.
Yeah.
So you, you focused a lot on the age restriction. Why the age restriction? Why, why, I understand the need to, to create fifty-five and over communities. But why create these communities and why make the bylaw only for fifty-five and over? And I, I'm speaking from someone, I'm not a farmer. I'm not from here.
Yep.
I work all over the place. All up and down twenty-four. And ninety-five, they have bedroom communities. People who work, live there, and, and they work in Boston and, and other parts. They're not all fifty-five and over.
Right.
And not all, not all of them are high-paying jobs. Why, why should those, that type of housing be age-restricted?
Okay. The reason I was age-restricting it was because density gets a bump with the way the current zoning is. So if you amended this, that the density calculation mirrored the townhouse calculation if it's age-qualified. And if it's not age-qualified, make it such that the density is one-for-one. So if you lay out a grid subdivision of twenty lots, take those same twenty lots, shrink them down, and do single homes, now it's a better bylaw than your existing single-family subdivision. You get the open space, you cluster the homes, but there isn't a density bonus unless it's age-qualified. So those two changes.
Could you, could you, I'm sorry, Fran?
Yeah, you have to, yeah. I was just gonna say, we do, we do have a conservation subdivision bylaw in place already.
Okay.
And which allow, I mean, if you, which allows you to take up, if, if you get nineteen lots or whatever, you, you can shrink it down. Plus, you also get a bonus lots out of that too by doing that. And it, and it does give you the, the thing. But, but then again, I was thinking about that today, but that gives you, you'd have to change the, you have to, it's, you can't do a conservation subdivision because then that gives you singularly owned lots, even though it's a con- conservation subdivision. I mean, you're looking for a, a, a piece of land, and the people don't really own the, the land that they're, they're putting their unit on. I mean, they buy the unit, but the land's owned by the developer or the homeowners association or whatever, right?
Yep. It looks and feels like single-family, but
Right.
each unit owner has an exclusive use area, so.
So this is different than the conservation subdivision.
So to answer your question, John, it sounds like there's a bylaw in place to do regular housing. What I was trying to do, and I believe it was Cornelius's point, was not give the same kind of density bonus to a typical subdivision. Because that potentially hurts the town. If you age-qualify it, it, you know, it's, it's a good thing for the town. Tax-wise, less water, less sewer, and less traffic. Tremendous amount of reduction in traffic. About forty to fifty percent, I believe.
No. And, and I'm all in favor of the over fifty-five developments, which I've gone over again and again and again, and the need for them in this town. But the problem with this bylaw is it's not necessarily restricted to over fifty-five, and it kind of supersedes or provides a lot more density than we would otherwise see in certain other of our subdivision bylaws, like the conservation subdivi- division bylaw. And the fact that it's almost tripling the amount of residences that can be put on an otherwise typically-built acreage kind of makes any financial benefit to the town a, a wash. So, so that, that argument doesn't, doesn't really hold up. The fact that this town does need more over fifty-five development is great, and this isn't about you, because this bylaw opens it up to anybody. And that's the way we will have to treat it. It will, anybody, the next guy that comes through the door is gonna get treated exactly the same way under these bylaw rules as everybody else. And, and that's one of my biggest issues with this.
Right. And that, that's why I believe you as a board can make that amendment to the bylaw, simply by making it age-qualified.
I've gone over it, and I've looked at quite a bit of it, and it would take a, a little bit to do. But it would, it should have gone through the zoning bylaw study committee, and their recommendation is that for the townhouse development bylaw, is that there was not enough time, you know, to vet such a complex piece of law by the time the town meeting came, came on. And as chairman of that committee, I have to respect that I've put together a great group of volunteers, intelligent people, and, and I, I have to stand by the recommendation of, of the zoning bylaw committee. And that's just outside of any other reservations that I have in regards to what, 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 and how this is being presented to the town.
Understood. I would recommend that one of the other board members make a motion to make it an age-qualified bylaw. And I think you've accomplished what Mr. Shea has brought up as, as the biggest concern.
Well, no, no, that, that's not the biggest concern. The biggest concern, one of the biggest concerns, some of the other concerns I have is the process that it took to get here and what was involved to get it at this point where we are tonight. As I, as I stated earlier, I, I know for a fact that, that private meetings have taken place, and whether or not that falls inside or outside of the public laws of the, of the town of Massachusetts, I personally find it ethically and morally irresponsible that it has happened. And that I was put into it, because I was certainly there at one of those meetings.
Okay. I, I wasn't involved in any of those meetings.
No, no, you sure weren't. No.
I, I
Let me make that
I'm just trying to point out to the board what potentially could be a missed opportunity.
I, I feel it, it has been a missed opportunity, because with the proper, gone through the proper channels and appropriate above the board actions from everybody involved, excluded, you're excluded, because I am not willing to, you are not part of what I'm talking about at all.
Yep.
That this could have been a very good for the town, but as it stands, it's not, and it would, it would require an extensive amount of, of vetting. It's, this is not something that can be done in twenty minutes. It, this is a law that's going to change the future direction of our town, and just age-restricting it without taking every sentence in this and looking at it, it, it's just not, it's just not doable. There's, there's enough in here that even if we just age-restricted it, it, it wouldn't be palatable to me because of some of the language that's in here and, and a variety of the other issues that are involved in this.
I would defer to the other board members. Obviously, Mr. Shea's.
I think we have, we have some other people that'd like to speak.
Certainly.
Thank you for
All right. Thank you.
your thoughts. Ms. Mello.
Fran Mello, thirty-eight Mellow Street. Sorry. Fran Mello, thirty-eight Mellow Street. Along with the fact that the bylaw study committee chose not to move this forward, looking at this law, changing the age to fifty-five, doesn't fix it. This gentleman here is talking about a sub-development where he's gonna own the land, he's gonna own the roads, he's going to charge an HOA fee. That's fine. None of that is covered in this bylaw. The next developer comes in, he gets a twenty-acre parcel of land, he builds with density, and then he turns the road over to the town. So I understand that this gentleman's thought process about what he wants to do on his parcel of land may work. This bylaw does not work for our town.
I just want to say that there are, you know, we do have townhouse development that's already been built in town, and
He's a single family.
So, okay, but, okay. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Sarah Hunes, fifty-two Forest Street. So I'd just like to make a couple of points. It was pointed out, it's pointed out in this single-family cluster development proposed article that it will include affordable housing to low and moderate-income families. Now, I understand that the planning board has allowed them to transfer those affordable units potentially to Silver Street in a mixed-use area. I know that hasn't happened yet, but
Well, yeah, we, what we approved was to stay where they are now. If, if we haven't approved anything to go, for anything to go to Silver Street.
Okay. That's, that's good. I, it's the developer, someone brought up earlier that there was a proposed development on Silver Street. It was mixed-use. It included some affordable. It may have been this gentleman. I can't honestly remember who. I wanted to, to talk to that point really quickly. Years ago, when I was on planning board, a number of us worked really hard to make sure that all the developments who required, that required special permits, conservation subdivisions, townhouses, anything that required a special permit, required a percentage of affordable housing in that development. And it had to look the same on the outside. And then somewhere along the line, and I don't know that it was this particular planning board, but at some point, that got changed. So the developer now has a choice of putting them somewhere else, on the other side of the tracks, or paying cash money, not to build them. I just wanted to register my complete horror at that having changed.
Yeah, that wasn't during, it wasn't from Yeah, that wasn't during, it wasn't from any board that I was on. I don't know when that came about. I believe, anyway, I don't remember that.
It, it did.
Did it?
Yeah. No, I'm not, I'm not blaming anyone in particular, I'm just, it's something that this board might want to consider undoing in the future. Um, and then it, the open space requirements in here under section forty-fifty talk about including all undeveloped wetlands on the parcel as part of the open space. In our conservation subdivision bylaw, I know only twenty-five percent of the parcel can be wetlands. Um, and I think there's a reason for that, because people who live there, they want a little value for their money. They'd like to be able to hike in some of the upland area instead of it all being wet.
But isn't that, that's, isn't it currently so that wetlands are part of the conservation?
Twenty-five percent of the land, yes.
Yeah, okay.
That's set aside as the conservation land. Only a certain percentage can be wet. It, this is written as all undeveloped wetlands on the parcel.
Okay, okay, I get it.
Um, I also ha- have an objection to, um, not just the appearance, but the actual fact that this was being done for a particular developer. Um, and I understand that a mistake was made. But in the informational summary, it says therefore the approved project is a non-conforming development. So what got approved was a, was a development that didn't conform to our zoning. And it seems to me the way to fix that is, and forgive me for jumping ahead, but to actually, and I had to leave your meeting early. Uh, last time I had a sudden, um, thing happen, and so I'm sorry if this is out of order. But under Article twenty-eight, the definition of townhouse, I think that the way this is worded now, containing at least two, but not more than five, that'll fix not only all the other townhomes that have been built in, that are non-conforming to our zoning bylaws, but it will fix this one too. Without having to adopt this big open space, um, housing, whatever it's called.
How do you do that with single family, though?
Well, I don't know. That's, you know, that's, that's something that you'll have to, um, figure out. So my other concern is, again, what Connie brought up about the density. Um, and again, this will be something used by not just a single developer, but people will come into town and use this particular one. And one of my concerns is a lot of the new, um, developments that are springing up. Take Plymouth, for example. Personally, that's not what I want Carver to look like.
No.
Um, so I, I guess that's my point. I think that, um, I don't know how to help you solve the issue of having permitted something that was non-conforming. Um, but I do think that fixing the definition of townhouse will at least get those out there now that are not, also non-conforming, get them into, into line with the bylaws. And I hope that you, um, consider Connie's recommendation. I'm on the zoning bylaw study committee as well, and it was, I believe, a unanimous vote to, um, ask you guys if we could keep studying this. It's just a lot to throw at a town meeting, and it's a lot, it's too quick, so, anyway. Thank you very much.
Well, I just wanna answer that. The, the reason we did that is I know that the zoning bylaw committee, we got tied up with different things. We were waiting for SERPED to come and explain to us the TDR. We have a grant for, to work with SERPED on the TDRs, and it seems like the TDRs is, are going to, uh, transfer of developmental rights is gonna take up a lot of time, and we've had a bunch of meetings on that. So, um, since the zoning bylaw committee is under the, under the planning board, we've just felt that maybe the planning board, uh, could take this on and bring it to town meeting. So that's why I did it that way. But, uh, we'll see how that goes. Yes.
Again, I apologize, Mr. Chair. Did, have you guys gone over the floodplain bylaw? Was that at the last, um, meeting?
Yes. Yeah, we already did the floodplain, yes.
So, so I had to miss that. Is there any chance at the very end I could speak to that really briefly?
Sure, sure.
Thanks very much.
All right, who, who else? Sarah?
Thank you. Sarah Sterns, twenty-six Tremont Street. Um, I just had a question, really, um, or a clarification, Mr. Chairman. Um, in looking at the proposed, um, single-family cluster bylaw, it appears that it is based very closely on our existing townhouse bylaw. Almost mirrors it, in fact. So I understand that it may seem like a daunting task to go through this, um, in a short amount of time, but, and Jim, maybe you can speak to this, um, as the person who helped prepare this or prepared this. Um, it is based on something that is already in our bylaws, and that it is not something that differs significantly from what we're already using for these types of townhouse developments, which are different from individually-owned lots within a typical subdivision. So I guess I would just maybe ask Jim for some clarification for the board's and the public's understanding of how similar or how different this proposed item may be from what we're already used to using. Um, and I guess to that point, is it something that the board could consider, um, you know, adopting with any kind of revisions based on the similarity to what's already in our existing bylaw under the townhouse segment? Um, so Jim, I don't know if you have any clarification for all of us on that?
Yeah, it's based on the townhouse bylaw, and then trying to remove references to townhouse development. Uh, but all the calculations are the same, uh, density requirements are the same.
So, like, uh, yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you. For the record, Loring Tripp, I'm planner with, uh, Weathervein Development. Um, in regards to the bylaw, uh, just, just as a, it's identic- it's identical. I, we can say it's identical to the townhouse bylaw. The only difference is the reference to a multi-unit, uh, units. Um, the reality is, and Sarah is not far off, and what could fix us simply is remove the definition of townhouse from the bylaw altogether, and not have a definition that defines what the housing units look like, and leave it up to the determination of the board of what combinations could be. That's the simple fix. So I wanna, I wanna digress just a second to go back to how we got here, in that, in, excuse me.
I'm sorry, Loring, can we come up to Sarah Sterns with me?
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying that the, the definition is the issue here that, that's caused the problem, okay? When we first came to the board, uh, as, as Mr. Walsh discussed, we came together, we came in front of the board with a, uh, under the townhouse section of bylaw, with what we perceived was in line with what the bylaw allowed. In that we had twenty-five percent duplexes in the project, which is the, the maximum allowed in the townhouse bylaw, and we came with a single unit, uh, uh, design for the much, for the seventy-five percent others. We went through the whole public process. We met with the neighbors. We, we had engineers and everything, went through multiple public hearings. We got a unanimous, uh, vote of support for that project with twenty-five percent duplexes, and then the rest, single family. Well, in the term of that, it changed ownership to Weathervein Developments, and we came back to the board and said, you know, he has a product that he does in Waymouth, that he's been very successful with. We'd like to make a few changes. So we filed a modification for that project, publicly notified, went through the entire project, met with all the neighbors and friends, again, this is the third time that this property's been through the board, got a unanimous support with the new town planner and the, the, you know, several of you that were on the board at the time. We got approved. It was only when we came back to say, look, we wanna get more open space for you. We wanna design, you know, we've, we've purchased the Cranberry Bog next door, done that. We're looking at the bylaw, we wanna make this even a better project, give you even more open space. We are far passing the thirty percent open space. We sat down again, and that's when, oh, the definition of, of, of a townhouse is, is no, uh, not less than three, but no more than five. What does that mean? Well, in the other section of the bylaw, it says you have to, you can't have more than twenty-five percent duplexes. Well, right there, you have a conflict in your bylaw. On one page, it says you can have duplexes, on the other page, you can only have three to five units. So here we were, caught in this mess for the past two years of trying to resolve and unthread this mess that happened just because the, the way the board voted, they thought it was a better project by getting rid of the duplexes, giving the whole project single families, having it all fifty-five plus, so it generates twice as much tax revenue as, as any other type of development. In fact, the projects that we're proposing generate somewhere between five hundred and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in tax revenue at full buildout, above cost of services. That's significant. So that's why the board and we all worked together for almost two years to get to this point. Except for this definition that stopped us, stopped all the work. You know, all the, we've already got the whole, all the paved roads, the hydrant system that we're required to put in, even though there's no water in it, in the town, we put in a hundred thousand dollars worth of hydrants. That's the problem we're having. So we're trying to come to you, in the cooperative effort that we came to you the first time, say, can we just resolve this so we can move forward? This isn't a Pandora's box of some complicated bylaw that's never been seen before. It's identical to what we've been using, and you've been using for almost, uh, over a decade since it was in place. So we're just asking for a little cooperation help, so that we can move forward, put people back to work, get the houses built, get you your tax revenue. This doesn't, this doesn't put any, any weight against the town. It, it actually creates a benefit. And the issue of the roads and everything being taken over by the town, it's, that's not how this works.
Not to you.
It doesn't, it
Not to you, but if you make a single family cluster bylaw, the way that's written.
It's written under the townhouse bylaw, I disagree with you. It's written under the townhouse bylaw in which all the roads and infrastructure must
Mr. Tripp, may I ask a question?
...special permit, I'm just wanting to finish this one thought, and then I'll gladly, under the special permit, uh, because it's a, a townhouse development, all the roads and infrastructure must be maintained by the housing association. It's not a single-family development. This is your townhouse bylaw with the only change is that it allows single-family units. It's the same thing. So it doesn't, it does not put that burden on the town. It puts the burden on us. We gotta maintain it, and then the homeowners, once it's fully built, maintain it in perpetuity. It's a, it's a plus-plus for the town.
Uh, as long as you're okay, Mr. Tripp.
Yep.
You, you are clearly a proponent, one of the proponents of this bylaw. Uh, as was mentioned earlier, you and, and Sarah helped, helped draft this, this bylaw.
This particular version was drafted by Mr. Walsh. The one we had was the one that your board didn't wanna move forward, that we, that we were asked to
It was virtually identical. You can, you can, it's, it's not apples and oranges, it, it's Granny Smith and Macintosh. So my, my question is, as, in, in full and open disclosure, why don't you just say that? That you've been part of this from the beginning.
Of course we have. We've been negotiating, working with the town for thr- over three years.
Right, and this came to us, um, two days before the public hearing. This is actually any of our first opportunities to address this as an entire planning board. It's a very complex issue, and you worked on it for some time, you and Sarah. Uh, you didn't just help spit out the original one of these, which is almost word-for-word the same. Um, you spent some time and worked on it and developed it, and you pushed it because you're a proponent of it, because you are heavily vested in this getting passed.
The community's heavily vested in it, I believe.
But our bigger issue is, you're not the only one that's gonna be using this bylaw.
The, the issue is, is that if you're looking at your townhouse bylaw, it's the exact same thing.
You keep claiming that, that the ti- town will benefit financially, but we're allowing triple density on this land.
It's not triple density.
It, oh, it's not? On an, on a traditional fi- uh, seven acres, we could build five houses. Under this plan, we could build fourteen. That's almost triple density.
You, you're, you're misconstruing the numbers and don't understand the way
Oh, I do understand it, because the NULA numbers say you're allowed to multiply by two. If you get seven acres, multiply by two, it's fourteen.
Which is identical to your townhouse development, correct?
Pardon?
Isn't that the same way you get your calculations with your townhouse development?
The townhouse development is a little different, and as we
It's not different at all. It's exactly, it's a
Right, right, and, and that was one of the points that we reached an issue on, that, that we were asked to vet the townhouse development bylaw. And we went through it, and that was one of the issues that we felt needed to be further vetted. And it was to look into the financial responsibilities that such developments in this town can cost this town.
First, first and foremost.
You were there for the meetings. I, I distinctly remember you were there for all the meetings except for maybe the last one.
And you're talking over me again, just like in the meetings. I understand that.
Oh.
So, look, let me just explain, let, let me just explain to you. That when you do the calculations, they're identical to the townhouse, the, the, uh, calculations. If you keep it, if you get rid of the single-family on age-restricted, those units are calculated at one point two five in the bylaw. Fifty-five pluses calculated at, at two units per acre. You have to have five acres or more, okay? So that calculation has not changed. It's identical. Your densities are exactly the same. We haven't changed anything of, of the structure of it, okay? The, the benefit to the town is cer- is this. And then when you say that there's three times the density, yes, on the acreage. You're exactly right. But all the rest remains is open space. That's what's called the smart growth in an open space development, is when you can, uh, build on less land, creating less road, less runoff, less sewerage, less traffic. That's smart growth, and that's what this bylaw is. It's a smart growth bylaw. And that when you look at, that you're, you're building on less land, that means there's less asphalt, less length of roads to maintain and upkeep, which would be, ends up being upkeep by the, the neighborhood. And that's the way these, these, this, this is meant to be, and a townhouse development is meant to be. It's not meant that the roads get turned over to the town. It's, it's inherent in it. You know, just like the affordable housing, it's inherent in that, in the bylaw that you required ten percent. We were going up as much as fifteen percent between the two properties that we were looking at to use this bylaw with. But also, the other benefit is that, is that when, when you look at the tax revenue that comes off of this, to say that this provides no tax revenue, I can, I can cite off dozen developments that are fifty-five plus that do it. Pine Hills is a great example of that. Here currently, it's only one-third built out, a thousand homes. It, it generates twenty-five million, twenty-seven million
Mr. Chairman
...a year in revenue. That's the type of benefit, if you're looking for benefits and saying that there's no benefits in this project, it is there. You know, so
All right.
We're just looking, I mean, at, at the end of the day, and Bruce, I know you get it, we're just looking for a way forward here, as, as, as human beings, you know, trying to do business in this, this community, that we had a mistake that happened. We're just looking for, can we find some kind of a compromise and a, a way to move forward here for all of us? And, and, and we, you know, we're here for the long haul. We wanna be good neighbors in this town. But, you know, the door's been stopped because of a definition.
Mr. Chairman.
And, and we're stuck, we're stuck in this spot, and we're just looking for a way out.
Okay, okay, thank you. I, I, s- Ms. Houns?
Just a point of personal preference, Mr. Chair. I wanted to ask Mr. Shea, when you said Loring and Sarah had worked on that bylaw, could you clarify?
Uh, yes, uh, uh, not, Ms., Ms. Sterns.
Okay, thank you very much. It wasn't me.
No, no. It, it was mentioned earlier.
And in case the committee doesn't realize, they didn't work on that bylaw. They were handed that bylaw and told to write it. And the emails came back to the study committee saying, this is the bylaw that Sarah and Mr. Tripp wrote.
Yes, Sarah?
Sorry, I just wanna be clear with the board that because we had an ongoing project, we had to work with the town. There, there was nothing underhanded about it. It was an ongoing project. We were working together to try to brainstorm how to amend, whatever we could amend, to make the project conforming. We hadn't even started talking about changing articles at town meeting at the beginning of this conversation. It was just project-focused, not town meeting or not bylaw-focused. It was just how do we all come together to make this work for the development, for the community, and just right this ship? Eventually, we got to the point where, working with Jim, um, and the building commis-, former building commissioner, um, and town council, I guess, at the time, said, really, the best way to address this is to amend either the townhouse bylaw or the definition as part of the upcoming town meeting. So, you know, again, we kicked around different ideas, what would be the best way to address. Again, working with Jim, trying to amend sections of the bylaw and/or the definition for this project, not necessarily for the community as a whole, but then, you know, understanding that if the, a section of the bylaw would change, it would change for the community, and it wouldn't just be project-specific. So it did start out that way. But by the time it got to Jim and, you know, working with other So it did start out that way, but by the time it got to Jim and, you know, working with other staff members at the town, it was, you know, it was decided that this townhouse bylaw, to amend that and some of the issues that that inherently has in it, that we've talked about and that your bylaw committee talked about, was too, too big to address in the time that everyone had before this spring's town meeting. And I think that everyone could agree upon that. So in working with the town planner, Jim had said, why don't we create a new section? We'll leave the townhouse section as is, so as not to create a bigger issue. And this new section could potentially open up a different type of housing option for the community. Not necessarily linked to the project, but obviously way back two years ago, that's where the conversation started. So just for clarity, for the board and for the public, you know, this particular developer and our team has been involved, but it really has changed from a very specific task to a greater ask. I don't know why this board hasn't seen this bylaw until two days ago and.
It was a little over a week ago.
Oh, a week ago.
Before the public hearing.
Even so, that's not fair, that this board didn't have more time to re- review it, digest it, and be able to come here tonight and talk about it and give it the time that it deserves. And I'm, that's, that's unfortunate, so I'm disappointed to hear that, that you weren't given enough time for that. So, anyway, just to kinda clear the record. Thank you.
Well, I think one of the reasons why this may have came, uh, came to the, the board members at that time, I think, is that Jim was tied up with getting other things ready for town meeting and everything, so. Be it, be that as it may, that's what happened. So, uh. Anybody have any other thing that they would like to say?
Jim Bristol again. So, so I don't know if it's possible for the board to, um, if, if the board isn't opposed to the singles, I don't know why we wouldn't just change the townhouse definition to allow for one to five units in a building. And that would make it so we don't have any legal issues with the town on a project that's been approved. I don't wanna go there. I've never had to sue anybody in my life. I don't wanna go that route. But I don't know what else you expect us to do when you approved a project and we've spent millions of dollars building roads to build twenty-four singles already. I think that's the simplest fix, is just allow one to five units. If you're not opposed to singles, it fixes everything. I think it's a great bylaw for the town going forward and we would like to be working in this town for decades to come. I've really enjoyed coming in front of this board every time. It's been a welcoming community. Every department head I've met with, it tries to work with you instead of against you, and in many other towns, it's not like that. So, um, I appreciated the efforts that everybody put forth in this town and we're looking forward to hopefully working here for, for decades, so, um, I think that might be the simplest fix.
If, if I could just ask you a question, how many completed homes do you have out there? Single-family homes?
There's, there's four at different stages of construction. So two are, two are close to being done and a couple are just foundations at this point, but.
Okay, so that's, that's what I saw.
We have, we have pumped the brakes a bit with this going on, so. Thank you.
To be fair, if, if I thought we had a chance to properly go through and vet this through the zoning bylaw study committee and bring this back for a special town meeting or another town meeting in September, I'd be happy to do it. But as it stands right now, frankly, there's too, too many issues in regards to this. Not to mention that both at the zoning bylaw committee and in the planning board committee, the interest in lawyers has been brought up in both committees, and frankly, that makes me wanna take another step back.
Just, if I could just ask Jim a question, could this be solved, in your opinion, by putting, adding single-family, uh, to the bylaw of townhouses? Single-family duplexes and townhouses?
Right, so the, the body of the townhouse bylaw, the only reference to unit type is where it talks about no more than twenty-five percent is duplex or two-family. So the, and I think that was kind of like the problem with the bylaw in the first place, is that it's a townhouse development bylaw, but it didn't, within the body of the text of the bylaw, there's no references to the type of units that you're looking at. And so separately, it was in the back of the book and the definitions. And then when you go look at the definition, then you found, okay, there's a, there was a problem with the definition where it only referenced, more than two and including five, uh, so there was a, you know, problem we addressed the other night. The board could go and just say, okay, well, let's change the definition to include, you know, single-family units. Nothing that would prevent the board to do something like that.
John, do you have something?
Yeah, I, I just wanna make sure that I'm getting the gist of this whole project correct. At the initial, this thing was unanimously, uh, approved, correct?
Yes, yeah, I believe so, yeah.
On its, on its standing. The only thing that has significantly changed is the ownership of the project and the number of acres?
I don't think the ownership has changed. It.
Well, they brought up that it, that, that, uh, an ownership changed.
Go ahead.
The original project was approved in two thousand eighteen for fifty-four units with the duplexes.
Right.
At that time, it then did change ownership.
Okay.
Came back for a modification and was voted unanimously a second time, this time removing all duplexes and making it a hundred percent single-family.
Okay.
I believe that the project started with nineteen single-family projects.
Well, it, it did start as that, and then I think there went to a, another developer, went to Jim, and then, uh, and, and then it went to.
Right, so I think, so DPH Realty Trust was, I guess, the applicant that applied for the nineteen-unit subdivision. And I believe there are also, correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah or anyone else, that then DPH came in and applied for the townhouses?
Yes, um, the quick overview, since I've been working on this site for many years. DHP Realty was the original applicant, nineteen single-family traditional subdivision, which was approved by the planning board at that time. After the approval, the same applicant decided that, um, a better use of the site, instead of a conventional subdivision, would be to look at a townhouse, um, development. So it was the same applicant.
That was DHP?
Yes.
Okay.
DHP came back al- almost a year later to the day with a fifty-four-unit, um, townhouse development that was predominantly single units, but had some duplexes, uh, mixed in based on our read of the bylaw that allowed for twen- up to twenty-five percent of duplexes.
Okay, can, can I pause real quick?
Yeah.
Can you define your definition of townhouse? Because we're working on two different definitions.
I know, we're working on many definitions. And to me, a townhouse, I don't really assign a number of units, but it's some, it's a housing unit on a single lot. To me, that's the defining factor. It's not broken up into individually owned lots as a subdivision would be. So that's really where we were coming from. It's one lot owned by one entity with a, with a, um, HOA in place, et cetera, all the things we talked about earlier. And that's how it was permitted. So with a mix of number of units. So, you know, from there, the applicant sold the project to Bristol Brothers or Weathervein Companies. So Jim took it on and, um, at that time, since he had done this many times over, wanted to modify some of the way that the units were laid out and how they looked and kind of, you know, put his stamp on it. At the time, he was ready to get going and get under construction with building permits, so we came to the board just to modify the first phase so that they could start construction, with the intent to come back and modify the remaining two phases to match, you know, what we had done with phase one. So that's really where it stood. That mi- minor modification was reviewed by the town's review engineer. They've been involved from the beginning and approved unanimously, again, at the planning board level. No issues, met with the building commissioner, you know, went through house numbering, et cetera. So it, you know, it got through to the point of construction, was under construction, and we started talking about the next swath of modifications. And that's when it was brought to our attention that the townhouse definition did not include the singular, the single units that had been approved. So we were just sort of stuck in between.
Point of clarification, that was when the proposed project at Silver and North Main was brought in.
Well, we hadn't filed anything yet. That was just a, that was a, you know, pie in the sky kind of discussion at that point.
Well, actually, no, um, Laurie and I met, we had a discussion, you know, he met with myself and Bruce, and he went through the, you know, the application for the, uh, single-family townhouses at that site at Von's Pond. And it was a few days later, you know, I just had this thing in my head, something isn't right. And then I said, okay, well, I read through the whole bylaw, then I read through the definitions, and that's where I discovered that the definition did not support single-family townhouses. And, uh.
It didn't, yeah, and it also didn't include duplexes.
That's correct.
Which had been approved, not just on this site, but other sites throughout the town. So we recognized there was a problem at that point and then started working to try to rectify it, and here we are.
Mr. Chair, could I, how much of the first phase is, would you say is completed?
So I think that's what Jim was just referring to, that he's got four buildings under construction.
The roads are all, diamonds are all twenty-four single.
No, no, just the first phase.
But there's just four houses, um, to date that are under construction.
So it's. Well, what would it take to finish the first phase?
Like what?
I don't know if we can unless we get a, a bylaw.
Well, no, I'm, what I was gonna ask, Mr. Chair, is, um, halting the fir-, obviously halting the first phase and figuring out how to go forward on the first phase so that the bylaw committee has an opportunity to really look at this and really to go over this.
Yeah.
Um, is my question to you, Mr. Chair, is it, is there, is there, is this where we have to seek legal counsel? So that we can, we can gain vote?
Well, we did consult with legal counsel. They did say, yes, you're, you're right. The definition doesn't allow a single-family, um, in a townhouse development, cause, you know, the, of the definition. And so one of the thoughts was to come up with a, uh, a, a, a change to the bylaw that would allow that. So either having a new section or you could amend, amend the definition of townhouse to include single, or you could go and, um, you know, amend the townhouse development bylaw, so that.
One of the issues that I have, Sarah, with your definition, that puts pretty much the entire town as a townhouse.
Multiple units on one lot.
A, a single how, no, you, you said a, a single home on a piece of property.
No, I said, yeah, some sort of housing unit on a single lot, but I mean, you kinda caught me.
Right, but that's, that's, that's the entire town.
Just for clarification, when you say single lot, you mean a parcel of land that would have multiple housing units on it?
It would be multiple units on one lot. But I was just, you know, I, in my mind, hadn't thought, is it one building? Is it a combined with a, a number of units? That hadn't even really kind of entered into the equation. I, in the past, in this area, a typical development would be a subdivision. I mean, that's pretty much what a rural area like this has. So the difference to me is that there are multiple dwellings or units, or whatever the, you know, whatever the term is, on one commonly-owned lot, or one, you know, one singular lot. So that's, you know, and one of the things we talked about early on was, it seemed to be the easiest thing to do in the case of this discussion, would be to amend the townhouse definition. Let's not touch the bylaw section because there's a lot that needs to be hashed out with that and that's not necessarily enough time to get through all that amongst all the different levels prior to town meeting. So let's look at this one-sentence definition and see if we can amend it so that it's more inclusive and, you know, doesn't have to spell out the number of units potentially, or give a broader range, or, you know, whatever the agreed-upon fix is, it seemed like a pretty easy fix. And that's why that definition was on the bylaw reviews commit-, review committee's agenda probably in the first place.
So why haven't you just made the lot smaller?
I don't, I don't.
If you're putting, if you're putting a single home on multiple lots, or on, on multiple homes on one lot.
Yeah.
Why not just break the lot up into a smaller parcel, since they're all gonna have individual addresses, correct?
Well, each.
It would be like, one house would be twenty-five Green Street.
Yeah.
The next house would be twenty-seven Green Street.
Yep.
Correct? Or is this gonna be an A, B, C type?
They have, they're numbered units, per the building inspector.
Okay, so.
They're just not connected, and that's.
I, I, I understand that. So why would the parcel not be a smaller, just say it's a single home on a quarter acre instead of a full acre?
Meeting, trying to meet the subdivision regulations? I'm not following. That, that doesn't meet the subdivision regulations.
Okay, so why are, then, why, instead of creating a whole new law, why not just make that adjustment? Okay, why don't we just, why, why isn't somebody just saying, well, why don't we just make smaller plots?
I don't.
Well, that would have to be an adjustment to another bylaw.
Yeah.
Cause right now, say for the simple.
But that seems to be a whole lot easier, that seems to be a whole lot easier than creating a whole new bylaw.
Yeah, I, I mean, I really never have, have been a proponent for creating a new bylaw. Our suggestion was just to adjust the definition of townhouse so that it reflected more accurately and just included, um, you know, didn't say more than two, but less, or up to five, or whatever the original language was. It just said up to five units, or one or, one or more, one to five, you know what I mean? So I, that was, that was really our suggestion and I felt personally that that would be the easiest and most effective way to still be able to build townhouses in Carver, but that weren't restricted to, um, three to five-unit combined buildings. I, I don't know what the real answer is, honestly, John. It's.
No, I just, uh, with, with all the different, with the different places that I've lived.
Yeah.
Ultimately, what ends up, it gets announced by a mayor or something like that, that they change the definition and, um, this. Now, this size plot of land is, is, is what you can put a house on.
Right, I think.
To increase the densi-, to increase the density, to make room for more people that are moving in.
Yeah.
Population's not getting smaller.
Yeah.
It's not getting smaller anywhere. There's gonna be more people, period. They're gonna wanna move here, they're gonna wanna move there, they're gonna wanna move everywhere. We gotta, we've, ultimately, we're gonna have to have room for people if, to be able to maintain our town.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, you know, the, this is something that we really, uh, I mean, it's, this is one of those rules we really need to, to focus on and, and given that this thing was. And, and given that this thing was, um, has been grant, has been approved multiple times, I agree with Kevin over there that we need to come up with some way to move forward so that we can get to a resolution. If this ends up being a one-off project, then it's a one-off project. And we work on uh defining it so that the future projects down the road are, are, are better off for the town. But this particular project, I, I, I'm frankly aghast that it has been, now, we're working on what, three years now? And all we've got to show for it is some roads that aren't getting used and four homes that have barely been started and that are rotting as we sit here. And this, uh, and this thing goes back and forth. It's a lot of wasted money.
I'm sorry, John. How many homes are actually in each plot, a lot?
It's.
Cause I went down to see them. I wanted to see them.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the one that probably is gonna be the model, that's a really good sized home. So how many of those would be in that one area, in that one acre?
Well, it's, it's, the o- entire project is permitted for fifty-four units total.
Are they all gonna be different sizes?
Well, Jim can probably talk about that.
Yeah, we've, we've got a half dozen different designs. So that is the biggest unit uh that, that we've contemplated building. So once we start to show them the different designs, it's more or less what your man does.
So that's the model right there that.
Okay, if, if you could speak in the, it's just because I don't, don't know if, just wanna get this recorded.
Yep, sorry. Um, we've got about six different designs right now. The, the home you toured or, or looked at is the largest. It's uh about twenty-three hundred square feet, so it is a large home. Uh, first floor master, they all have first floor masters. And um we have units as, uh, the smaller ones are down around fourteen hundred square feet. Um, so it, once we have the different designs up and, you know, it was trying to get going and getting people touring the, the place to, to see what it becomes. But, you know, we, we were looking forward to, to, to building a, a real nice community there. We still are. We're, you know, somehow we're gonna work with you guys to, to get there, you know, whether it's um figuring out how to make the twenty-four units work and introducing a bylaw or um amending the townhouse. I, sitting here listening to it all, and I've had a couple different zoning attorneys look at it. And their consensus has been simply change it to one to five units. Um, just allow the single with, by the definition. And that's end of story. Everything's good.
It doesn't look anything like my definition of a townhouse is.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and when you talk about Waymouth and you talk about Carver, you're talking about two different animals there. That's a city.
Well, it's a city, but if, I wish, I, I was born and raised, lived my whole life in Waymouth. And um I wish more Waymouth was developed the way we did it. And it's, like I said, we have a hundred and fifty homes on thirty acres. Down here, the fire department requires thirty feet separation. So if you were to drive through our community, I think you'd find it's really nice. But here, we'll have even more separation than we have um in Waymouth. So um it's, it's a unique development to Waymouth. Uh, there's a hundred and forty acres of open space.
I didn't realize there was any land.
So i- i- is that, is that the?
I had to as- I had to assemble forty pieces of land.
I- i- is that the, uh, the housing that was built over on the, uh, Old Navy?
No, no, we're, we're near the airbase, but this is um just out of Colombian Square.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, you know, you might wonder, you know, maybe the simplest approach to help move this project move forward is to amend the townhouse bylaw to use a, a single unit. You know, one to five units.
We could do that tonight.
We would have to reopen that. I would, I would. We've already voted on that, uh.
And, and I would think that that could have a very broad effect on all the other subdivision rules that we have without ever looking into them. That could honestly unravel just about all the conservation subdivisions, all the uh townhouse subdivisions and a variety of other issues involved in this.
Well, conserv- conservation subdivisions are, it's, that's a whole different animal. That's where you have, each house is on a single lot. We're talking, the townhouse bylaws, and we have townhouses in, in Carver. Um, we uh, that's, those townhouses are built on one single parcel of land. And um so, a- and you're only allowed so many units per, per size of the, of the land. Um, and you have to take into calculation the wetlands and, and other things like that. So, and in this particular project, now, if it's over fifty-five, you're, you're in a townhouse development, you're you uh get additional units? Or is it the same?
You would just get the same number of units based on a new uh.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, I don't quite understand what Connie's talking about, about getting additional units. Because I know, even though we have some single family homes in this project, it would be the same. I mean, this project has fifty-four units. Some were gonna be duplexes, which were fine. And because of a misunderstanding in the definition of townhouses, we have single family units there now. There are no more units than would be allowed on this property that, than, that would be allowed if you had duplexes and triplexes. It's the same amount of units. But what's different about this one is you have duplexes and you have some single family homes. So even though it's fifty-five, so, and that was one of the things that originally the planning board liked about this project was it being fifty-five. The neighbors liked it. But I mean, the, I just wanna say, cause I just didn't quite understand what you're saying. You get two, three, two, three times more.
Oh, to clarify, under tr- under traditional development, if you had seven acres of buildable land, you could build five houses. Under this and, and some of our other ones, with that same seven acre land, you can build up to fourteen. And that's almost triple over traditional development. That, that, that's my point.
But that's allowable now by a townhouse bylaw.
Right, under certain restrictions under the townhouse bylaw.
That it can either be duplexes or up to five units per building.
Right, as it makes use development containing no more than twenty-five percent duplexes.
Right, right, right.
And, and I, I'm pretty sure this, this project that's being proposed is not gonna contain twenty-five percent of duplexes. But on the other hand, I find it difficult to fit any definition of townhouse into this particular, if they had all common walls or something along those lines, I could maybe see it. But individual, single family houses are individual, single family houses. Do they own the house or is it just a rental?
I.
Because that would, pretty much.
I would think they would be owned.
Then it would be individually owned, single family houses, even if it was on one lot. Condos, all in one building, under one envelope, uh, those can all be individually owned, but they wouldn't be considered single family homes.
Well, we do have some condos in town that are being rented right now, I believe. And I'm not sure how Coppelant Lane is. I don't know if they do rentals or if they, they've actually sold, if, if they're of single ownership. I, I'm not sure. Are they, yeah?
The condos up by us, they were for sale, but I don't know if they actually sold any of them. I'll see. They were up over three hundred.
Th- these would be for sale owned by the individual. Yep.
Mr. Chair.
And i- if I, if I may, make one other point too. In, in changing the definition from one to five units, anybody that comes in and proposes the singles is gonna be doing a less dense development simply by the fact that the, the fire department requires thirty feet in between buildings. So when we went to try to make it all singles, it was difficult to make it work, but we, we got it to work. Um, so just inherently by the fire department requiring that thirty foot separation, if you change the definition to allow the singles, anybody that proposes the singles is gonna be doing less units overall just because of the geometry of uh trying to put the layout together. Thanks.
Rich, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I'm, w- w- you know, last week we talked about the townhouses. And we basically said a townhouse, it's a single building with two or more, but not less than five. So now we wanna change that. Again, cause we just changed it last week.
Right, yeah, that, that's what, that's what I was bring, that's what I had brought up, is that we'd have to re, we'd have to reopen that.
So, you know, and then, you know, I'd have to do Connie. I mean, they've been sitting on it for three years. We just got it a week ago. And you want us to make a decision, it's a name.
All right, all right. Well. Is there, is there any other, uh, anybody would like to speak?
Hello, Jim Hoffman, A Great Metal Drive. It's had a question. Um, from what the proponents had said, that they originally had suggested just to change the definition of the townhouse bylaw, correct? That's originally what they had requested?
It was one of the suggestions they made.
Okay.
Yep.
So that, they were told no, that the better way was to come up with a new bylaw? Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so the last meeting, the board redefined townhouses, correct?
That's correct, at the last public hearing.
Right. So I guess I'm confused. I, I'm coming into this late, just kinda catching up. So if the, if the last meeting, it was redefined, why wasn't it redefined for, to include this project? So it would have been one to five. I mean, we, we know it's gonna be a, it's a problem. This has been started in the past. So I guess I'm just a little confused on that. Why, what was the, what was the thought process behind changing the townhouse bylaw to two to five and not one to five? So this project itself would have been included in it?
I, I will say, and, and I can't speak for the, the board here, but I know that the zoning bylaw committee felt that the appropriate definition or the definition in, in the minds of so many of the members of the zoning bylaw committee, um, was that a townhouse was uh one structure that contained at least multiple units in it. And I, I think that's the, I believe they, they felt that was the more traditional uh understanding of it. But again, we weren't presented with this issue at the zoning bylaw study committee.
So the zoning bylaw committee was the one that changed the bylaw?
No, we just made a recommendation. Uh, we, we sit down, we, we go through the bylaws and
Right.
and uh we went through them. And this one was one of the ones that was presented to us um for uh what would our recommendation be on it? And we recommended that it be brought from more than two to five to two to five. So we, our recommendation was to remove the word more.
So you, and then you brought it to the planning board, you?
No, we, we just put our recommendation to the planning board. This was something that the planning board, an issue that the planning board was uh um scheduled to address.
Okay.
But we just, as an advisory committee, this was our advice on, on, in regards to that bylaw.
So based on your advice, the sub, the subcommittee, the planning board then voted on that at the?
Not based on our advice. In conjunction, I would think. Our advice is our advice and I, I would think that everybody.
In conjunction with your
Yeah.
recommendation.
It, it hap- the planning board's recommendation, I think, uh, fell in line with that of the zoning bylaw study committee.
So at no time was this, this issue brought up to the zoning bylaw committee then? This project, nobody, I mean.
Not as the zoning bylaw committee? No, it was, uh, we were also tasked with um re, uh, going over the townhouse, uh, proposed changes to the townhouse bylaw. The town, and um we treated them as two separate issues. They weren't, as far as the zoning bylaw study committee was, one law, one law. We treated them as individual laws. We didn't treat them as co-joined laws. And when it came to the townhouse bylaw in, which is roughly this, the changes to be made to it, we felt that it needed uh more appropriate time to vet it. And we had spent some time on it at that point. And uh the consensus was that we hadn't gotten far, far enough through the particular bylaw to recommend it to the uh, the town meeting, that it hadn't, we felt it hadn't been fully vetted. And the vote of the zoning bylaw committee was to table it until uh such a time as it could be more appropriately vetted.
I can understand that, just getting something right, you know, that late in the game. I guess my, I'm just, my whole concern was this project's been around for a while. And the new, you know, knew what the issues were coming up. So when the last sub, I'm sorry, the last townhouse bylaw was readjusted, I just, just wondering why this wasn't kind of bridged in with it a little bit.
Right.
You, you know, it seems like just the, if, if you do change it to one to five, might help this project. I don't know, like John, you had said, and Kevin, you had said, you know, these guys have done everything by the book. And whatever mistakes were done in the past, we're just gonna try to get by that. So again, I think everyone's looking for the best solution.
John agreed with me.
Yeah.
That part needs to go forward, but we, we, Connie's right, we do have to look at this.
Oh, there's no doubt. And, and I agree a hundred percent, Connie.
And honestly, we just, we, we did look at the single, single, but we didn't feel that that was traditionally what a townhouse was. And we weren't sure how it would, it would affect the other laws in, in, in our zoning bylaws. Because
Okay.
all of a sudden, a, a single family, uh, residents can be considered a townhouse. And where, what, how is that gonna, that doesn't solve any of the problems if it makes a hundred more problems. And, and that was one of the issues that, that we discussed and felt that two to five was an appropriate definition. And, and the planning board at the last meeting voted in, in alignment with that, so.
Okay. I was just wondering if that was even brought into the equation at all, what, what's being suggested tonight? Where the, where I heard the proponents say they had s- suggested that to.
They suggested it, but the same concern Connie had was, you know, the type of unit. But one of the things that kind of controls um any impact on any other bylaw is the fact that part of the definition refers you back to the townhouse development bylaw, section thirty-nine hundred. So that if, if it were changed to one unit, it only affects projects being developed under the townhouse development bylaw. It doesn't affect any other uh development process in town.
Okay.
If you look, you know, so at the tail end of the uh definition, it referred you back to the townhouse development bylaw. So that any pr- that definition just pertains to the townhouse development bylaw. It doesn't, doesn't tie in with any of the other um sections of the bylaw.
We were asked to define what a townhouse is. And that's, that's what the zoning bylaw study committee felt a townhouse was. Was a multiple unit structure, two to five, uh, singular units.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. Do we have anybody on uh, on Zoom?
We have a guest, but let me just see if I can ask to. So I asked them to unmute.
So I g- I guess.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, can I just make one, one, which I think might be helpful for anyone here, to get us all the way through this?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, in my past life, I sat as a chairman for about a decade in Plymouth. And I brought forward over a hundred different zoning articles and been through the process. So I know the process somewhat. You don't have to make a decision tonight. You can leave this, the issue, you can reopen, you can reopen your, your definition. Leave it open till the minute before town meeting and vet this up until, to the moment you feel comfortable that there's no other sections affected. I mean, Mr. Walsh just pretty much explained that the definition refers back to only townhouse development, so therefore it can't affect any of that. But chew on that for a little while. You have the right to vote right up until the moment. Everything's been publicly advertised for the. You have the right to vote right up until the moment, everything's been publicly advertised for the articles. And, and, and you can, you can make amendments right up until the moment of town meeting. And we did this many times in Plymouth on contentious issues that we couldn't just do it in a short period of time, that we needed that extra time to vet it out and get the public input and think about it, to make sure that for every cause and reaction, we knew what was gonna happen. We're not trying to rush you to judgment, we're still stuck with town meeting, we can't do anything till sixty to ninety days after town meeting because that's when that's the state approves it, and you can actually use the bylaw. So we still are months away from even being able to, to move forward. But you have this extra time, take the extra couple of months and vet this out if that's what it takes. We're not, we're not trying to, to, to put, push you guys or anything, but we just wanna try to find a reasonable path forward. And that's, that's really a great option to do, take this extra time, take another month, take right up to the moment of town meeting and, and vet this out, because it is a simple solution, it really is, and it doesn't have a lot of negative impacts by changing it. It just allows us to move forward, and it's not just our project. The town has approved other projects that don't conform to the townhouse development. All the duplexes that were approved under townhouse development do not conform to the previous development, therefore, they've been non-conforming you know, until the, the definition changes in, in spring town meeting, so. You know, it, it's not just us, there are other projects that are non-conforming that were approved. So it, it solves a problem across the town. So it's just a thought that I throw out to you, because that was a tool that I used, and it was very successful, and it takes the gun away from your head. You're not under pressure, take your time, vet it, because I think if you give it the, the thought and the time, it's such a simple solution, so we can just move forward together. You know, thank you.
Uh, I guess we, we have different ways we can go here. Uh, when was, when would be our next town meeting after this one coming up?
Oh, it'll be in, so we have April thirteenth, and then if, if there, if there is one in the fall, and there's discussion that there would be to deal with the transfer development right, and then there was another matter that's escaping me at the, at the moment. But that would, there'd be something in the, possibly in the fall, so nothing's official yet, but um there was discussion about having the town, the transfer development right um bylaw revisions done at, say, a, a fall town meeting.
Well. After seeing everybody here speak tonight, I, it seems like this is gonna go back to the bylaw review committee. Uh, I mean, that's one way we could go, I don't see that that's gonna happen for this town meeting.
So you're talking about the single family cluster development, is that right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, the other thing is, is I mean, if we vote to recommend, I don't think then it I mean, it could be withdrawn, we could vote on it, no matter how the vote went, we could still present it at town meeting. Uh, or we could revise, I mean, these are just options, you know, whether I know that, I don't think everybody agrees on this, but um, or we could amend the townhouse bylaw to include one unit. But when Jim asked about that, you know, we discussed this, I discussed this with Jim Walsh before, and we just didn't think that a townhouse would be one unit, so that, that was the problem with that. We thought that a townhouse would be more two to, to five units, and that a single unit would be a single family. So that's, that's why it came to be, that's why we, we did it this way uh tonight. So uh I don't know, I guess I'll entertain a motion for I mean, I, I you know, I can see all sides of this. The, the only thing that it's gonna do is it's just gonna take more time to, to resolve. Whether that's good for Mr. Bristol or not, I wouldn't think it would be, but um in order to do this right, um, I guess we're gonna have to do it that way. Although um, you know, I just wanna say that this was an oversight, it uh it wasn't done intentionally, there were a lot of people looking at these plans and nobody picked that up. So we are trying to, to correct the situation, but we've also tried to do something that's beneficial to the town. Um, like Ms. Hewin says, uh, if you go through Plymouth and you see all the, the uh townhouses through there, I don't know if that's what Carver I don't, I just don't see that in Carver, and I don't see that, when we talked at the master plan, that people would wanna see that. They wanna see something with rural character, and I think that the single family, the, the single dwelling units um, whether you call them townhouses or, or cluster development, I think that's just a much better way to go in town. Um, I think it just blends in with our neighborhoods, and it's something that you would like to see on the outskirts of town, or, or as we talk about the TDRs uh in, in some of the areas in the center of town that were talking about uh uh, transfer of devi- del- developmental rights, um, this type of housing I think would, would look good there. Where you would wanna see a big towering um units there. So I don't know, uh, what's the feeling of the board? Anybody wanna make?
I, I personally would like to see it properly gone through and adjusted at the consensus with the board.
So if we, if we withdraw this tonight, as Connie had suggested, hasn't made the motion, I, I think you, you did speak about that, though. Um, does that mean that it could not be brought up at town meeting if?
So if people-
Well, we'd have to have further discussions on this.
I think, I, I think that, I think this thing needs to be tabled um for at least another meeting or two uh to have some, some more discussion and uh give us, give each one of us a chance to vet uh and, and, and go through and pick things apart, see where, uh, see where things overlap and um, and to come up with alternatives to the bylaw that's proposed.
Do we have time to do that? We don't really have the time, you said that tonight was, I mean, what's the draft that?
Well, you know, they're looking for, you know, the final warrant articles, so it could be done something that, with the idea that it'd be withdrawn, and then, you know, the planning board could look at this um over time, so that if there were, or fall town meeting, the board would have a chance to look at it, or if there wasn't a fall town meeting, then it could be um taken up at the next uh in-oral town meeting. Then that way gives everyone the time to go through and vet it.
Alright.
And have those, have those discussions.
Alright, I guess, I guess we'll take a vote on it to withdraw this article. Uh, does anybody wanna make that motion?
I will make the motion to uh withdraw this article without prejudice for further discussion.
Second that.
So we have a, a motion from Connie Shea, second by Ellen Sedillo. Um, alright, let's take a vote.
Cornelia Shea says aye. Aye, John Gasky says aye.
Uh, just by s- seeing the opposition to this, uh, and I, I just see no other solution, um, I'm gonna say aye too.
I have to agree with our chair, that because there's opposition, that I also have to say aye.
I think we need more time, so I say aye.
Alright, so is you unanimous to withdraw um without prejudice, then?
Now, there's no way we can bring this up at next week's planning board, or
Well, I think
the public hearing specific to this article?
I think I think Jim said we could, I mean, we've withdrawn this, but we could-
Well, we've, we've, yeah, that I suppose we could, I could amend the motion to just table it, but I mean, that was really my question, is, is it possible? I know we're, we have a meeting next Tuesday night.
Um, yeah, so we have kind of a could bring it up at that point, I guess, you know, continue-
Does the town have to have our final draft on this?
Um, well, they are looking for, you know, the final articles, because then it has to go up to the uh select board uh for their uh approval, you know, final approval, and then it also has to be uh sent out to legal counsel for their review.
Right, and it's
And it's a very short time, timeframe between
Right, thirty days.
now and uh April thirteenth, and then things have to get, uh, get published um in the booklet, so that there, there's some limiting time factors. But it could, you know, so this bylaw, now as a, you know, interim fix, you know, the, the board could uh look at the definition again, and if, if the board chose to do so, and they could change there um for one to five units, and I'll be the first one to admit, when it was first proposed, they said, you know, that doesn't really, to me, seem like a townhouse, a single unit, but in this case, we have a, you know, development project that's just gonna sit and fester um if it doesn't uh get some form of relief to, to move forward. You know, it wasn't, it wasn't any one party's fault, it was just, uh, you know, if you look at the townhouse bylaw, there's absolutely no references to the type of units in there. And um with, with the exception of the section that limits the number of duplexes. So it, to me, it's easy to understand why people missed it, because it just wasn't in the bylaw, the body of the townhouse bylaw itself. So that could be something the board may wanna reconsider, is to reopen the discussion about the townhouse bylaw. See if, you know, the group wants to allow, you know, add single family to the uh changes we made the other night. And uh, but it's really up to the board to make that decision.
Mr. Chair, if, so if we look at the article to um, or changing the definition of townhouse, we have counsel to take a look at that and to, but them to give us the feedback on this?
Well
By doing that?
Well, if the board went ahead and, and made the change, so all these articles that, that have been approved so far, so they go and they eventually get reviewed by legal counsel. So, um
So going, what I'm trying to say is, so going forward on this
Mm-hmm.
we actually have to go backwards to take a look at this because of them not, not being, I don't wanna use the word co-joined, but they, one does have to do with the other, and so it has to be a clear definition. And did we not, did we not address this last week um without that understanding?
Okay, so last week, the board made a change to the townhouse bylaw to include two to uh five units as part of the definition.
Right, so would, would it be possible for us to withdraw that? Um, because now we have to relook at whether or not um counsel tells us that it is, that the wording can be one opposed to two.
I don't think you need counsel to tell you that, I think it's just up to the board to, to make that determination, so the board could I don't think there's anything that prevents the board to reconsider um that article, and look at um changing it if, if the board so desires. And then, say the board does make that change, then that moves along in the process where, you know, it, it, you know, look, it's reviewed by the select board, and then it's reviewed by town council. So town council will review it and, you know, I don't think there's, it's up to the town, you know, to make its definition, and if they wanna, if, if the if the recommendation of the planning board is to include single family, then I, I don't think there's anything that prevents it um other than at some future point, you know, you have to convince town meeting.
So if we could think about this until our next meeting and then further discuss it, now do we, so we've, we've already voted to uh
And then the other thing too is that um, you know, the, the board made a recommendation for the townhouse definition, you know. I have my facts straight, at town meeting, people can propose amendments on the floor.
Mm-hmm.
Is that true?
Yes.
So if, if someone wanted to propose an amendment to include single family as part of that, then I think that can happen at town meeting. So it's not something, you know, it, so we have to get stuff to, you know, the administrator's office, so they can complete their process. But we, we had this discussion, people are thinking about it, and, you know, there's the potential at town meeting to address, you know, making a further amendment uh to it to include single family.
But how can we do that if we've already withdrawn it?
No, no, that, we withdrew this, I, I think we're talking about the definition of a townhouse.
Oh, okay, the definition of a townhouse, okay.
Right. Right, because we took the vote on the other article, that's been withdrawn, and so this would be, okay, how do we, you know, try to work with, you know, weather vane to fix the problem?
Okay.
And so uh the simplest way, without having to go through a whole bylaw, uh could be just to change the definition to include single family.
Okay, but s- so we, we take this up at our next meeting?
Or you could take it up tonight, or
Oh, okay.
or, or you say, okay, we already approved this, we already approved it, the, the definition, and it could potentially be dealt with it on the town meeting floor.
Yes, Sarah.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair, Sarah Hewins, fifty-two Forest Street. So I just wanted to, to um alert the board, not every article can be amended on the floor. It depends on council's opinion, so if, if they feel that what was advertised on the warrant is substanti- what's being proposed as an amendment is substantially different from what's being advertised on the warrant, town council might say that the amendment can't be, uh, that it can't happen. So just a heads up.
And that would be done on the floor of town meeting by the?
If, if someone makes that amendment, but council may rule right then that, that, that's too different from what was advertised on the warrant, so the public didn't have a chance to know what it was. I'm not saying that they would rule, I'm not a lawyer, but I've, I've seen that kind of thing happen before, so.
Okay, thank you. Yes, the other Sarah.
So um I would just like to ask the board if there's any appetite to reconsider the definition of a townhouse tonight to include single units, to address the issues that we discussed, I think it would be much appreciated. Um, I agree with Sarah that sometimes it, it's not easy or um advised to bring something up on the floor of town meeting. Whether it's perceived or not, if it doesn't have the vote of the, of the planning board, and then the other groups that, that vet these articles, I think it's just um, you know, better supported. So I just would ask if the board has interest this evening to reconsider that, that, that we would ask for that consideration. Thank you.
So we'd have to go back to the townhouse bylaw to do that?
To the townhouse definition.
Townhouse definition, yeah.
Article six definition.
Now, let's see how everybody feels about that. So this was our very first article that we, we looked at. So, I guess well, we could do it, yeah, okay, so well, let's, let's take a vote on it, I guess, is there, or if, if the- Well, we could do it, yeah, okay, so, well, let's, let's take a vote on it, I guess. Is there, or if, if there's anybody that, uh, would like a motion, make a motion to amend the townhouse bylaw to include, it'd be, uh, single family? Single, single, well, how would we put that? Single family, single unit?
So right now, um, townhouse should mean a single building or group of buildings on a single lot containing at least two, but not more than five dwelling units per building, created in accordance with the provisions of section thirty-nine hundred herein. So you would have to say something like at least one, one unit, uh, but not more, or at least one, but not more than five dwelling units per building.
So the wording would be, um, townhouse shall mean a single building or group of buildings on a single lot or multiple lots?
Well, that language is stricken out now. That was taken out.
We struck out the multiple lots, right?
Right.
So townhouse shall mean a single building or group of buildings on a single lot, but not more than five?
Uh, containing.
Containing not more than five.
Well, it would only say one.
Well, containing at least one, but not more than five dwelling units per building.
Well, if we say not more than five, we include one.
But if you don't say it's one, then you don't have to have it in the law, right?
And the single lot with the single family building. Right? Because that's what it would say. Now.
Well, I've already said it. I want, I want them to be able to continue.
I agree. I think that, yes.
And I want to take a look at what the bylaw is strongly looking at and wants the time to look at to go up, because that's the right thing.
No, sure, I'd, I'd be happy to overdo it.
I mean, everything about this conversation we've had tonight is really good. I don't want what they have in Plymouth. But what they have and what they're doing in the other end of town right now by the airport is absolutely perfect and beautiful, and I want that. It's a perfect place for it. I want it to go forward, but I don't wanna see this become a mess and then our town start to look like Plymouth, because we've made a mistake on one word that comes down to townhouse or single. So.
Question that I have, when we start, when you're talking about splitting hairs and going over one word, you talk about, um, the house being on a single plot. So what happens if the, um, subdivision design puts one house over the line of two pieces of what's two lots? You space everything out, everything spaced out evenly, and suddenly you've got a building that is technically on two lots. If we limit it to just being a building or a group of buildings on one lot, now you're saying that that particular spacing is illegal. Instead of having everything spaced out nice and even, you get up with a problem where now you've got, you've got a building crossing over nice and spaced out, and you got one building that's crossing over. Now that guy is illegal. Well.
But the thing, the idea is that you're, you won't be over on that line or over that line or, no, you're talking about
But we're looking, like I said.
Not a person's property, not the development property?
You, right, we're doing it, we're doing a development. And we're only allowed to have certain, we're, we're doing townhouses. We've got a building, we're spacing everything out nice and even, it's looking pretty, but suddenly, somebody looks at it and says, you've got this house, number fifty, number, number thirty-two is across the plot lines of two lots. By definition, that house can't exist, because it's gotta scooch over one way or the other to be legal. Because you've got one building on, instead of having one building on multiple plots, you've got one building, you've got, we, we've, we've said that it has to be one build, uh, multiple buildings on one plot. See what I'm saying?
Well, generally, these type of developments are done on one lot anyway. Um, I think this particular one was broken up into sections so that they, um, there was, uh, I think it's a state bylaw about
Well, that's, if that's what we, yeah, I mean, if that's what, if that's what ends up happening is that you're putting it down and you're
Well, well, when you design something like this, you don't design the building to go over lots. If a building
But you designed the layout.
Yeah, when the layout is designed and brought to the planning board, um, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't do it over multiple lots like that.
Sarah, Sarah could answer that question.
And if a mistake was made in the field, then it would have, it, it just couldn't be, you know? Um, I don't know how it's done in, in, in here, but, uh, in a lot of towns, you have to locate the foundation before they start to build, just to make sure that it's, it's in the right spot.
Well, but what I'm saying is, you've got, you're, you're creating a subdivision. You're, you're, you're creating this housing, this housing division, and it's, the whole thing, sure, the whole thing's owned by one person or one, one entity. But it's, i- i- in this, in the case we have right now, we've got nineteen plots, right?
No.
No.
If, if Sarah, if you wanna, if you wanna speak on this.
So the single family subdivision, when they, when this project was approved, that subdivision was rescinded. So all those lines that were split out into nineteen locks, lots were removed. The subdivision was rescinded.
Okay.
Then it moved on to the, under the townhouse development bylaw.
Ah, all right.
Okay, good.
Yeah, see, that's the thing.
Problem solved.
That's the thing with the townhouse development bylaw, it's built on one lot.
Okay.
And the people that, that live in the, in a townhouse development, you don't own the property.
Right.
You have rights over certain areas. You don't, you own the dwelling.
You don't own, you don't have mineral rights.
But you don't own the land. It's like the parks in Carver, um, all those, uh, park, you know, all the, uh, the prefabricated houses of what, whatever you may wanna call them that are, that are in the parks, they don't own the property.
Right.
And so they just own their, their trailer or, or manufactured home. And, um, and, and, but they, you know, they, they all contribute and the, and the homeowners, uh, they, they pay part of the taxes
Right, right.
and whatever they have to, but they don't own the property.
They have a monthly, monthly fee.
And then I, and I believe I was told by, uh, I don't know if this, that I thought that the, the reason we can't count those over uh, as, uh, as, as affordable housing units is because they don't own the property. It's, uh, it's, well, jointly owned, but I'm not sure about that, but, but anyway, it, I mean, there are a lot of places, a lot of, most over fifty-five places, the, the, the property is just one big lot, whether it be five acres, ten acres, fifty acres, a hundred acres. Um, it, it's not broken up into, into lots for each, uh, unit.
Right, understood, but then you just got through saying that that can't be counted as affordable housing. Then why would this subdivision be able to use twenty-five percent as affordable housing?
Yeah, I mean, I've
You're talking about the, the manufactured home parks, 'cause the people who live there don't own the land that's underneath it.
The people aren't gonna own the land that's underneath these homes either.
Right, but these, these are
Hmm, I, 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 I beg to differ. So, where, so, when, when I buy my, when I buy my place, what extra fees do I have to pay?
When you buy a house, you'll be paying for water and sewer and upkeep of common areas, plumbing, all the things that a town would, would manage. The association manages the fourth sub.
Um, sounds like I don't
This place has, these units have common sewer, so they're not individual separate systems. They go into a common system, and they also draw off from common levels. So they create their own infrastructure that they maintain, separate from the town.
So I mow my own yard.
No, no.
I take care of my own house.
Take care of the house and the structure, that's it.
I don't, I, I, I don't take care of my own yard. I can't put up a fence around it. Right?
No, you put up a fence with condominiums.
But, but I can't, but I can't, but I don't mow my own yard. Doesn't, doesn't sound like the, doesn't sound like that I own my property.
Well, you own the house, but the land is in common ownership, so you own a share of the underlying
It does, that's not, that's, that's, I'm sorry, that's not ownership.
It, it's a form of ownership. It's, you, you own in a pertinent percentage interest in the overall lot. And then on a plan, you have the exclusive use of, it looks just like a small house lot, but it's just a condominium exclusive use line. So, in our, in our condominiums, we do allow fences. Somebody else might come along and say, no, you can't do fences, 'cause it is easier, it's much easier to maintain when there's no fences. So we've had experience both ways, but, um, what's, what's nice about the maintenance is that the whole community gets the grass cut the same day. So, um, every time you drive into the community, it looks good. And I hope we get back to talking about one to five units.
Yeah. I mean, that's pretty much all the, the way that, that all these over fifty-five places, that's the reason that people go to the over fifty-five, because they don't have to do, you pay for people to, to mow your lawns.
Right, but what, like I said, when we're, when we're getting into the, when we're getting into talking about affordable housing.
There is affordable housing on this. Does anybody wanna address that?
That is
Right, there's
How does that work?
So when, when we talk about the trailer, you know, the manufactured home, the, those communities, it's because, uh, you have to use a state subsidy program in order to qualify as affordable housing. That's the, you know, and, 'cause they're developed, typically they were developed first by a private owner who had the, who had the entire piece of property, and then they, you know, then they, uh, you know, leased out spaces to the mobile homes. And because that didn't use a, what they refer to as a state subsidy program, wasn't done through, so, uh, 'cause Carver has special permits for certain types of development, uh, that includes inclusionary housing, that's why they get counted as, um, you know, as part of a state subsidy program, 'cause it's under the local initiative program, uh, as part of the HCD. And so that's why when we go out and, uh, for example, like this particular development, there's six units that were created, uh, via the, you know, special permit through the inclusionary housing portion of the bylaw, and that, you know, that required six units to be built. And actually, it's also part of the townhouse bylaw, the ten percent. So that's the inclusionary housing created by special permit, so that's why those units get counted towards the, uh, state requirements for affordable housing. Where the affordable home parks, or the, the mobile home parks, were not created through that type of a program. And so that's why they don't count towards the, uh, affordable housing limits. Even though they're more affordable than mostly affordable housing that's being created, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm not interested in getting into relitigating this whole thing, but
All right, anybody else wanna speak? So, uh, where are we now?
Did Kevin make a motion?
What I asked you was, can I make a motion against what we've already voted to bring to town, uh, on the definition of the townhouse? Because I was looking at it and I was thinking, what if it said, "Townhouse shall mean a single building or group of buildings on a single lot, one comma, but not more than five dwelling units per building." I'm asking if that has, what is the process of me bringing that up?
You ask for it to be reconsidered.
Ask for it to be reconsidered, so then I would like to have
Make a motion.
An article re, that, to bring to town hall reconsidered.
Okay, so you wanna make a motion to reconsider the definition of the townhouse definition?
Correct.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so Kevin made the motion, uh, John Gasky, uh, second, further discussion. Seeing none. Let's, uh, take, um, a vote for reconsideration.
Cornelius Shea says he, he feels it's in line with the zoning bylaw, study community recommendations, and, uh, he says nay.
John Gasky says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Swedillo, aye.
All right, so it's, we're the one. Okay, so I guess we'll ent- uh, entertain a motion to, uh, include one unit to five units.
One dwelling.
Oh, one dwelling, let's see.
Do you even have to use dwelling? Can, can it just be one comma?
Townhouse shall mean, containing one, but not more than five dwelling units per building. Create in accordance with the provisions of section thirty-nine hundred herein. All right, so I guess it would say, "Townhouse shall mean a single building or group, a single building or a group of buildings on a single lot containing one, but not more than five dwelling units per building, create in accordance with the provisions of section thirty-nine hundred herein."
Can we make it more specific to that particular townhouse bylaw? In other words, this isn't the general description or definition of a bylaw, but this is the definition only in regards to townhouse bylaw thirty-nine hundred? Can we make it more specific?
Well, it does say, "Create in accordance with the provisions of section thirty-nine hundred herein," which is the townhouse development bylaw. So this, this change will only affect, uh, projects being approved through the townhouse development bylaw.
Moving forward.
Excuse me?
Moving forward.
Moving for, right, right.
I, yeah. I, I just don't feel that that's I, I still have difficulty agreeing with this. I think, uh, I think what should have been done was a, a properly, um, put together bylaw to address fifty-five and older housing and community development in that area. I'm afraid, uh, I have concerns.
All right, did, did, so Kevin just asked the question, but you didn't make the motion.
I didn't make the motion.
Oh, I, I thought John seconded it.
Oh.
Well, no, that was for the
Oh, that was to reconsider.
That was to reconsider. That was to consider it.
Okay, so we need a motion. I guess the only way we're gonna find out what's gonna happen is if we have a motion to, uh, t- to, uh, to change the bylaw and it's, instead of saying at least containing two and it's, instead of saying at least containing two, but not more than five, it would be containing one, but not more than five dwelling units per building. So do I hear a motion?
I wanna ask Jim where Connie is bringing up the point of the fifty-five, which I think is a great point. And in this particular case, so that we can keep in the townhouse definition, only the single dwelling for the purpose of the fifty-five. If you know how to make that wording, that is exactly what I would like to make a motion for, however, I need, I want it to sound right.
So I guess you could say, uh, you keep the existing language, at least two, but not more than five dwelling units per building, except uh, a single unit may be allowed for over fifty-five development in accordance with the provisions of section thirty-nine hundred herein.
Uh, under special permit by the planning board in accordance?
Well, that's already contained in the, the townhouse development bylaw.
I like that.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, if I had a good memory, I would say that.
So, all right, so rea-
Well, I'm, I'm saying that, that the single use on one lot for over fifty-five specifically.
Specifically, the one lot is gonna deal with the over fifty-five.
The single unit specifically fifty-five must be maybe approved by the planning board under a special permit. In other words, we're not tied to it. If we feel it's a good idea, then we go forward with it. If we feel that it's not a good idea, then we don't have to approve it.
Oh, okay, so you're saying, um, okay, so, all right, more than five dwelling units per building, comma. Uh, so we wanna say something to the effect, except um, a single family unit dwelling unit may be allowed. Maybe allowed.
For fifty-five and older, under special permit.
Or. Fifty-five and over, but it's already covered in the townhouse bylaw. It's like planning view townhouse.
Then it shouldn't be an issue.
Um, you allow for fifty-five and older housing.
I'm talking about the single, single unit.
Right, but the, but the single un-
Standalone unit.
Right, but it's all created by special permit, so you have the permissive language, so the, um, to read through. Uh, the purpose of the proposed change is a correct, oh, hold it, we're going. Um, the townhouse, townhouse shall mean a single building or group of buildings on a single lot containing at least two, but not more than five dwelling units per building, except a single-family dwelling unit may be allowed for fifty-five and older housing. And uh, created in accordance with the provisions of section thirty-nine hundred herein. So section thirty-nine hundred is a site plan review and special permit process.
No, I'm familiar with it, thank you, yeah.
To, to approve that housing.
That's the townhouse bylaw. The townhouse development bylaw, thirty-nine hundred, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So what I'm, what I, what I was saying was single-use structure, like the development that's being proposed here, in other words, it can only be allowed under special permit through the planning board. Because everything else is under special permit, but if we are going to allow single structures on townhouse development, then that single structure should necessarily have to be approved specifically by the planning board. Not in accordance with thirty-nine hundred, because thirty-nine hundred doesn't address single structures except as allowable.
All right, still, still bringing it back for that special permit review, so you're saying within this definition, this definition ties into section thirty-nine hundred, townhouse development. So it's already a special permit process, but the per- language is permissive, saying the planning board has, except it is, maybe uh, may be allowed, or uh, the planning board may consider, uh, then it starts getting convoluted.
Go, go ahead, you can, if you reread it again, it might just.
Except a single-family dwelling unit may be allowed for fifty-five and older housing, comma, created in accordance with the provisions of section thirty-nine hundred herein.
Right, and and I feel like you're putting it on, all under one umbrella, where I think that specifically, in order to put single-family over fifty-five, it should be a specific point for the planning board to approve that specific to the design. In other words, they should come to us and check with us to see if it's appropriate before they spend their time and their money developing a townhouse program that might not fit within what we allow.
So basically, on top of that, if you're gonna put fifty-five and older, they need another permit for that. And not saying.
Well, if they've fifty-five and older, single family, they would need to be specifically allowed to do that.
And not just by the bylaw, saying, oh, it's in the bylaw, so we can do it.
I think you could just insert by special permit in accordance with thirty-nine hundred.
Yeah.
Really just reiterating that it's a special permit.
So except a single-family dwelling unit may be allowed for fifteen over, uh, housing by special permit. By special permit, comma, and then it'd be, uh, created in accordance with provisions of section thirty-nine hundred herein. Does that work? Yep.
I, I, I mean, it's, it, the, the planning board would have to take a look at it, but I think if you take it out separately, then, I don't know, then then you have to go through the whole bylaw or restate the offsets and, and all that, I mean, so the buildings will, will have all the offsets and, and go by so it, everything that, that the multiple units would have, um.
It, it can all be done under the same process, but I, I don't think that, that anybody should come in expecting that it's gonna be this way because it's under, that we, fifty-five and older, in a townhouse development can all be single units. And I, I don't think that's what we're looking for here, because otherwise, why don't we just approve the cluster development bylaw? I think it, they should come in with the expectation that if it's appropriate and the planning board feels it's, it's worth the extra effort to allow some sort of variance for that.
I mean, the only way you could limit it is, is to give it a percentage, like you give, you know, a duplex.
Right, but then you might wanna have a development that's a hundred percent, single family.
Hmm.
So, um, is, should I read it again to propose motion?
Yeah, sure.
All right, so it will be, um, or the language that could be incorporated to the proposal. So townhouse shall mean a single building or group of buildings on a single lot containing at least two, but not more than five dwelling units per building, uh, comma, except a single-family dwelling unit may be allowed for fifty-five and older housing by special permit, comma, created in accordance with the provisions of section thirty-nine hundred herein.
Right, in order, and that, what that says is in order to build single-family structures in a townhouse development, it was gonna require a special permit from the planning board. Or you can put it in as a variance. But I think that specifically, limiting it to requiring a special permit in order to put single-family developments in a townhouse, but uh, again, it, it's a townhouse development and I, I feel that, I don't know, I don't agree that single-family units, but I could see where this, this needs a solution.
So I don't, did, I don't, did Kevin make that motion yet, or?
Well, I need the language to be, I need the language to include, um, that this can only, you know, we can only allow this in this case, um, for fifty-five and older, as a special permit.
Okay, that's what we have.
So I will make that motion.
Okay. All right, so if I want me to just read it again for the record, so everyone has it straight.
Okay, just.
So townhouse shall mean a single, single building or a group of buildings on a single lot containing at least two, but not more than five dwelling units per building, comma, except a single-family dwelling unit may be allowed for fifty-five and older housing by special permit, comma, created in accordance with the provisions of section thirty-nine hundred herein.
I make that motion. If you want me to come over there and read it. I'd be happy to, or a young lady that's kind enough, that's reading all of these notes, can say that I make that motion.
Yeah, so moved, yeah. So do I hear a second?
I'll second.
So Ellen seconds it, so Ke- Kevin made the motion, Ellen seconded it. Any further discussion? Uh, seeing none. Let's uh, let's uh, take a vote.
Uh, Cornelius Shea says aye, in the hopes that we will be further vetting the proposed bylaw, but I, not under condition of, I say aye, but
Okay.
A more permanent solution would be far more preferable.
John Gasky says aye, uh, also saying that we need a better solution.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Swedillo, aye.
All right, so it was unanimous. Okay, uh, so that puts us to, we've done the solar bylaw, we've done the solar canopies, we've done we, okay, the single-family cluster development. There was one that, uh, um, Ms. Hewens.
Ms. Hewens wants to go over the floodplains.
Wants the floodplain.
Thank you all. I know you already looked at this. Um, I just pulled up what we have in place now, under the floodplain bylaw. And so the current floodplain bylaw has what's called use regulations. And it states that permitted uses, no new building shall be constructed and no existing structure shall be enlarged within its existing footprint, et cetera, nor shall any land, building, or structure be used for any purpose except, and then it has a list of exceptions, which includes outdoor recreation buildings, wildlife management buildings, like that. Um, and then it has, on the next section, the old thirty-seven seventy, talks about use limitations. And my um, hope and wish tonight is that you will consider, your new bylaw proposes section thirty-seven fifty uh, variances slash permits in the floodplain. Um, and in my reading of the purpose of a floodplain bylaw, it's to protect the floodplain, not to allow new things to be built in it. Now, in the old bylaw, it does allow some development and redevelopment, but only in very special cases. Um, where a firestorm or other similar disasters cause damage to uh, greater than fifty percent of a structure. So it's talking about grandfathered structures, if something happens to them, it's okay to rebuild. Um, and it's got quite a long list of things you can and can't do, and you have to do it under FEMA regulations and so on. Um, this new per- section that you're proposing, um, actually doesn't talk about doing it under FEMA regulations at all. And it is much more broad, it like, it sounds like it allows pretty much everything. Um, and it's focused almost entirely on the properties that will be at risk, which is a good reason to protect floodplains, obviously. You, you wanna protect especially what's already there, which, that shouldn't probably have been built in the first place, but it's there now.
Mm-huh.
Um, but my only point to you is, and I'm hoping you'll consider taking out this whole section thirty-seven fifty and just leaving the old use limitations one in, which is seven, thirty-seven seventy. Um, a couple of reasons, first of all, um, it's not just about damage to property. I think the town has a floodplain bylaw, um, for several reasons, but it's mainly because of how floodpr- floodplains protect uh, us, um, by absorbing pollutants. Um, and they keep, um, they keep the pollutants from contaminating our groundwater. Floodplains are pretty large areas. And our groundwater is our drinking water here in this town, for the, for, for the most part. Most of us have private wells. And they also pro- provide flood control, and that's, sounds obvious, floodplain, flood control. But the problem is, if you allow impervious surface, like new structures, and, and that means new roads. And all that stuff doesn't let the water drain properly, doesn't let it recharge the aquifer. Um, though, so the more impervious surface you have, the less and less, um, the floodplain can actually do what it's supposed to be doing. Um, so, so that's my request, um, on behalf of our groundwater, that you take out those variances. I think if you, if you look at the old bylaw again, the, the, the use limitations are, are pretty, pretty strict. But they, it's not as if they don't allow people to rebuild what was already there, and I think that's a key.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Did you get that, all that, Jim, so we can take a look at it, uh?
Uh, so it looks like, oh, thirty-seven.
I thought.
I can send that to you if you want.
Oh, sure, if you could send it to me, and then, um, would I, you know, I'd, I'd have to talk to the, the person up at the state, um.
Oh, so this, this was, oh, this, this was something that we got from the state, okay.
Yes, but, okay, so.
How can we change that if it's from the state?
I th- I thought my understanding was we were removing certain areas of the floodplain.
That's a different, that's a different matter, because if they have new floodplain maps, then you kinda do have to do what they say. But this sounds like something inserted.
Well, this is the entire floodplain regulation, they did the new studies. Um, the changes were supposed to have been made last year, but because of COVID, just, um, uh, did everything, so they came back with kind of a whole new, uh, language to use in the, in the bylaw.
Well, maybe it's something, I can still send you, um, a brief synopsis of what I said, and maybe it's something you can ask our town council whether, whether you have the authority to remove that, because I, I don't know if you do, I mean, it, it could be. I know a town's bylaw can be more strict than the state, but I don't know if you, but I mean, I think our bylaw was more strict than this. So that's, to, to me, even if this did come down from the state, your, your bylaw, your floodplain bylaw already was more strict, which is allowable.
So what was the section of the current bylaw you're referencing?
Thirty-seven fifty, which doesn't exist, it's different powers.
Uh, so now I'm looking in the current.
So, so the, so the current bylaw, um, is.
Floodplain.
So I'm, I'm looking under thirty-seven sixty, use regulations, and then thirty-seven seventy, use limitations. That's in the, the bylaw from, uh, April twenty nineteen.
Okay, so thirty-seven sixty, and thirty-seven seventy.
Oh, that's good.
Thirty-seven sixty is use regulations and thirty-seven seventy, I mean, sorry, is, is, uh, yeah, use regulations and thirty-seven seventy is use limitations. So if you compare those to this section thirty-seven fifty, if you did get. this section thirty-seven fifty, if you did get that section from the state, your current, um, prohibitions and variances and so on is more strict than what they're allowing. I think, I think, and that might be a legal question, that's my, just my opinion.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I know towns can, can, uh, make it, uh, more strict, uh, but can't take away the, the state, but can add more to it.
Absolutely, and I think our current one does that, so.
Okay, we'll, we'll take a look at it, Sarah. Thank you for the comment.
Great, thank you.
Uh, well. We're taking a look at it tonight?
Uh, no, I don't, no.
I'll take, I'll, I'll, I, now I know the sections that Sarah's concerned about of the current bylaw, and then I can take a look at it and, and bring this up with the state official.
So.
And.
I think it might be more of a council question.
Okay, so we're, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna take our time on this one, but we're not gonna take our time on the, on, on the one that we just dealt with?
Well.
I think this might be a, I don't mean to interrupt, but I think this might be just a question for council on the strictness of the language.
Right, well, I wanna, I wanna talk to the state to say, if we wanted to include this language back in, the two sections you referenced, is that a problem?
You, you can't include them both because they'll be contradictory.
Right, so include those in and then make the appropriate changes to the other sections and then, you know.
Oh, oh, yeah, I mean, you, you have to change the maps if they say change the map.
We've, we've al, we've already voted on this.
Yeah, I'll just have to see what they say. I mean, I can call, call up at least the state to say, look, this is a concern raised. Is it impossible to change this thing at this stage of the game or not, and then just take a familiar.
Or to add to.
I, I disagree. I, I, I strongly disagree with what we're, with what we're doing right now, given what we just went through. We just pushed through and, and got browbeated into pushing forward tonight, something that none of us really wanted to do. And then we're just going to accept that? What Sarah Hewens just, just got through saying, a- and we're, we're just gonna come back and say, oh, well, we'll just make a change to it later, a- and revisit it at another.
Well, I think we. I think we gotta.
If that's the case, I wanna rescind my vote on that last one and say, we need to go back and take a look at this for a little bit longer time.
Well, we, Jim's gotta go back to the state and, and then, and then, and then, you know, do what, do, do what he has to do.
But this is what we've already approved.
Um, Sarah just brought up about the.
Well, it was already closed. It was already approved.
Well, it, it may be that we may not do anything at all on that. I mean, that's just the way, I mean, if she didn't bring it up, we wouldn't be looking at it, so, uh.
She could have brought it up at town, at town meeting, too. She could have been here, she could have been here, she could have said something last week.
On her behalf, she did apologize to us, that she got, that she had an emergency and she couldn't.
I, I, I under, I understand, I understand that, but at the same time, we've already voted and closed on the issue.
Yep, and, and maybe it's something that we can deal with the next time around. I mean, this, I don't know how.
Well, I, I think it, I think it has to go to council if there's been changes in the bylaw, 'cause what we voted on was changes in section thirty-seven hundred floodplain district bylaw to reflect the updated insurance study and flood insurance rate map,
Right.
which is what we discussed at the planning.
Right.
But if there's, if there's changes in the language that are outside of the floodplain maps, I, I think it has to go to council to decide whether that was.
Yeah, to see if we can add anything to it, yeah.
Well, to see if we could change it from.
Or change it. Well, we can't change the state. You can't change
No, no, you can't change.
the state regu, but you can add to it.
Right, ours are, were stricter, and we're lessening.
Right.
And it's outside of the floodplain map, I, I'm not, I, we have to check with council to see if it passed a muster.
Right, right. I mean, there's nothing we can do with that tonight, 'cause we don't know what, what, what we're allowed to do.
We could bring it up for reconsideration, but I don't think that's appropriate. I think council has to answer that question.
Well, it may be, I know that we've had other questions about some of the bylaws and, and different, uh, legal advice that we've had on, uh, ongoing, uh, projects, and because of town meetings coming up all at once for all the towns, that the, I, I know our lawyers have been kinda backed up, and so we haven't been able to get instant answers on things. You know, we've had to wait, so I don't know if this will come in, in time for a town meeting or not, for this particular town meeting, but maybe if it's important, we'll have to bring it up for next town meeting. These, what I was reading about the FEMA maps, the FEMA maps are usually updated every five years, so, you know, so we won't get another update until five years, so if we have to make a change at the, at a, at a next town meeting, then we'll, we'll, we'll do it if we see that it's important.
So I could do whatever the pleasure of the board is. Do you, you know, if you, if they, if you want me to take a look, ta, contact the state to see that has any impact on, on the, on the state model, you know.
Yeah, I, I think we should, I think that would be good if you could at least do that, yeah.
I could do that. You know, it's changing anything, it's just, you know, fact gathering, and then we can also follow.
Right.
Legal counsel just to say, okay, here's the current bylaw, here's the proposed, you know, here's something brought up by the, you know, uh, chair of the select board, you know, would have, you know, is there something we need to do? Can this?
Yes.
Enter that town meeting if it needs to be? I don't know, uh, but, you know, I think it's just get direction from the board and how, how the board wants to go.
Yes, I, I, yeah, I think we need to gather information and see what we can do, but there's nothing we can do with it tonight. Not if we stay till midnight. There's nothing we're gonna do with it tonight, because we don't have the information, so. Alright, uh.
I just have one last question, and, and that's a body. Um, on this, Jim, I thought this section under the solar bylaws was supposed to be, I thought you said during the, uh.
Right, so if you go to the preceding page, where it says delete.
Okay.
Mark row.
I just wanted to check.
Do a use table, right, so eliminate that la, language.
Oh, yeah, I see it on the other page, so, thank you. I just wanted to get a clarification on that.
Alright. Because it's getting late, we have planning board member notes. Anybody wanna speak? Uh, we have planning director notes. Anything that's.
So we have, uh, so next week, uh, March eighteen, uh, there's a Complete Streets, um, kind of, uh, virtual town hall, uh, and it's gonna be via Zoom. So I'll be sending out more information about that to, you know, the members plus, uh, to the community. So it's talking about the Complete Streets program, and so they're trying to get input onto what, what the priorities may be for the town in terms of, you know, Complete Streets is looking at, you know, uh, well, in the city, you look at transit, uh, bicycling, uh, automobile, uh, walkability, in, in terms of, uh, of, of priorities for the community. And so this is a way that they're, they'll be, uh, gathering input from, from the community. Uh, Serpents are, are, is our consultant for the project. And so they're gathering information from the community in terms of what the priorities are that the community would like to see in terms of improving, you know, the, uh, uh, transportation in town for people. And so that'll be next week, and I'll be sending out, uh, an email notification as well as posting on the town website and other venues.
Okay.
Uh, so that if you wanna participate. And then there's also gonna be, the following week, there's a, they're also having coffee hours where, um, they'll be having a discussion for those people who can't make the workshop on, uh, March eighteen. And so I'll send that information out once I, I get it all solidified.
Hey, thank you, Jim. Uh, has everybody had a time to, uh, look at the minutes of March second? If they haven't, I, we could table that to our next meeting?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to table it to the next meeting.
Okay, have a motion. Have, uh, by Kevin. So, uh, further discussion, those in favor?
Aye.
Cornelius Say says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, next meeting will be March twenty-third. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Cornelius Say makes a motion for adjournment.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Okay, second by John Gasky. Okay, roll call.
Cornelius Say says aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone.